... Read to the correct. So, the other.
Is that yours?
Not on you.
You going? Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'd like to, uh, call this special meeting, Anthony County Commissioner's Court of Order. Didn't have a preacher normally, I guess, we're supposed to have more than steve here. Usually it's just steven us.
(laughing).
So, welcome. Uh, anyway, Kent, if you want to leave some prayers, let's kind of start this meeting on right.
Father, we come and want to come thanksgiving in our heart, for we realize that all things belong to you and all power of heaven and earth is in your hand. We pray for these commissioners and the jurors as we go through this budget that we may, with a sincere heart, consider every member of the county, consider every department in the county, and consider the peoples of this county. Asking you to bless us, give us wisdom and knowledge. These and other blessings, I start in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Do you want to pledge a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to pledge a prayer?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Well, again, the purpose of this meeting this afternoon is, uh, we've got it two-fold. It's a budget preview, present to y'all the budget that, that I've, with assistance of the auditor, put together as what I have to file Monday as a judge's proposed budget. And the second issue is to make sure that we have the road and bridge numbers in there that, in the way that y'all want them in there. Um, so, if you want, we've got, there've been some changes, y'all may have a couple of different forms in front of you, we'll get through it. Uh, the tax rates changed a couple times in the last 24 hours. Um, so, bear with us. I think we've got the right numbers out there now. Um, Eddie hopes, and for Eddie's sake, I hope he's right.
(laughing).
But, he doesn't really care. He's a short timer over here. Yeah, well, blame it on Janice or somebody. So, again, we'll, we'll, uh, just kind of give you a short tour of what we have. Y'all have a copy of it in front of you. Um, and for those out in the audience, I've got it, it's up on the both screens. If you can't see the front one, it's too far away, spin around through the back, or vice versa, it might be easier for you to, where you see them, the numbers may be show up better.
These letters need covered on this page.
Closer you are.
Just say it, hey, look at the letter.
Print, print there.
Red is pretty small.
Figure it out, man, really great, here you go. And I'm gonna look at my screen, so if they don't match the number, I'll call out that's on your page. Well, they should be the same, did you not get that update?
I did. But if you do view and, and minimize, and if you view, and, still zoom, right here. Mm-hmm. And say, uh...
Done, I'm in here.
Ninety. Ninety percent.
You spin that chair right.
I move over to the front, you can see that.
They'll get all the colors in there.
Yeah, but it's just hard for them to see, but...
I understand. But, okay. I don't know if it changes it that much.
Yeah, it, but it got, maybe, yeah, it got all them in this much time, yeah. Uh, y'all can, let me get back up to the top here. Um, and all these numbers, again, are, are, are in our revenues at the top of the first page. Uh, those are projected revenues based on history, and again, what the appraisals, what came from the certified appraisal rolls from the, from the appraisal district. Uh, you know, property taxes are, you know, the, look at it, look like it, we're gonna have about a $286,000 increase in our, in our property taxes, and the increase we're seeing, it looks like, for, part of it, or a lot of it, is there's a difference in the over 65 free, and, and although it may be, hate to think people have passed away, or maybe some of them moved off and, and, or sold their house and moved into an assisted living, and once they sell that property to some another 65, goes back on the tax roll, so, uh, we've got an increase there. Um, you know, some, there's some decreases, of course, in our interest income, we're projecting. Um, if you look down, uh, at the bottom, we're looking at, uh, the difference of $24,220,902 in our total, total projected, requested, projected revenue, saying it's the same as our proposed, if not, I mean, it is what it is, we're only gonna bring in so much money. Uh, so, you know, what we're requesting, what we're proposing is gonna be the same. Looks like it's about $382,000 increase, uh, over last year. Then you look in, look down at the next line on line 65, I don't know if y'all, if the number, I don't think the line number's wrong here, but underneath transfers in, we've transferred 370.
Line number?
Yes, right underneath the, the, the total revenues under transfers in, transfer from fund balance, and this is, this is, we've had some requests, uh, from, uh, the law enforcement agencies around, it's been, you know, the sheriff's office, the constable's office, city, the city's having a lot of problems with their, their communication down south in the county, so, we're looking at upgrading the communication system, and phase one will be towers and infrastructure.
One of those towers will go precinct four property and the valley.
We're looking at the valley site, yeah. Um, we're talking about three towers, uh, two new ones, new sites, and then the diva site. The total cost about $754,000, so, so, we're looking at maybe trying to split that with the city. Uh, so, our portion will be 371,536, that being a one-time expense, it's not recurring for those towers and infrastructure. We feel comfortable taking that out of the fund balance, and recoup that over the next few years and build that back, put that back in there. And there's also the opportunity to get some funding, maybe through some foundations, or we're also visiting with the other, the other entities, trying to maybe, uh, get them to pitch in some of this cost, so we can offset some of that, maybe in the future, so, again, uh, looking at, again, a total of about the difference between last year's and this year's, about $753,000. You go down and see the other transfers in to the mental health fund, castle boykin, juvenile services. We're paid, we're still on page two, I guess.
Two of thirteen.
Yeah, two of fourteen. Just wanna keep, I'm not, I don't have a page on here, so I just wanna make sure y'all, I keep up with y'all, y'all keep up with us. And then down under the total, below the total receipts, we'll start with, with the, underneath the transfers out, the total for the cost of health, mental health, castle boykin, juvenile services, we'll go into the different departments with county commissioners, and here's where we start talking about our expenses. Of course, there's the only change in the, to the county commissioners is compensation benefits is longevity.
Judge, in all cases, I mean, it's longevity and our, our workers' comp rate have changed, have increased, so the two of those, on all of these, that's the only change we've done in the cities, that is just the longevity.
Right. With the cost associated, yeah.
Yeah.
So, really, that's, I mean, and a lot of these departments, that's gonna be the only change. If you move down to county clerk's office, you can see where their total request over last year is $103 less, and even with the increase, they've reduced the, uh, $3,000 into their Bureau of Valley Statistics Training and Form Supplement, they've reduced their rental lease equipment by $2,000. Uh, capital outlay has gone away, so, there's really a net reduction in, in that department of $103. Uh, you go down to my office, again, it's just, um, some of that, it's gonna be the longevity, but that's not all longevity, just, uh...
Uh, T.
Some of T is 911, salary being moved. No other changes. Uh, county court of law one, and they, they submitted no budget, so we're assuming that they're happy with the, their current budget, uh, so the only increase in there is longevity, those costs associated with workers' comp. Court of law two, did you put these changes in?
No.
Okay, there, we have, we did get a request today, from county court of law two, he said he was going through his desk and came across the budget sheets. Um, and if you look at, under department 11, at the fourth line down, indigent attorney, CPS, there's, he has two indigent attorney, uh, line items, and he has one is for his criminal and plain civil, and then one is for the CPS, he does all the CPS cases in his court. Uh, he's asking for an increase from 120 to 130,000 in the CPS indigent attorney fees. And keep in mind that we do get some reimbursement from the state for indigent attorney fees. Last year, I think, was about 42,000 or 45,000 out of the 600,000 we spent. Um, but CPS does not count in that reimbursement, so they don't, that does not go towards our, right now, towards our, we're trying to get that changed in the session, the special session, we'll see how that goes.
What was he requesting, 10,000?
10,000 increase from 120 to 130. If you look in 2015, he spent 125,434, and last year in 2016, 151,565. And we budgeted 120, you know, thinking, you know, no one could have a new judge and everything, and he was trying to maybe, with a doubt, to put some of that CPS back with the challenges, and that just hadn't happened, so, um, he's wanting to increase it to, to 100, from 120 to 130. So, we can put that in as, as I go. Did you put it in your guide?
Mine won't calculate.
That's not doing it. And then his visiting reporter, he's wanting to leave that the same at 6,000. Uh, when you come down to training personnel, he wants, he's asking for an additional 500, from 3,500 to 4,000 in there. And then trial transcripts, he's asking for an increase from 8,000 to 10,000. And, you know, those, there's no way in on it. Uh, you know, if you look back in 2014 on your budget, those are, 14, 15, and 16 are actual numbers for the year. That's what actually was spent for the year. If you look at 14, they spent $226 on trial transcripts. 15, they spent 9,712, and then last year was 7,001, so we budgeted 8,000 this year. I don't, you know, again, just, just those, there's a couple of these things, and these court systems are just kind of prep sheets, you know, you throw it against the wall, hope it sticks, but, you know, you just never know. So, he's requesting 10,000 based on what he's experiencing, I guess, today, you know, this year.
Do we know what his current use is right now?
We can check.
$7,776. So, this is for...
That's year-to-date?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, this year, he's, he's gonna wipe that out, so, again, he, we're still working with Judge Underwood, trying to get some of the CPS cases moved and get some more funding from them, so if we can do that, that would certainly help. And everything else, the only increase he, he requested. Basically, it's about a $12,000 increase over current year's budget, but like I said, you know, 10,000, that's for indigent attorneys, very minimal request for, you know, other, other areas. County Attorney's Office, again, didn't request any additional increase in their budget. The only thing we increased was the longevity, workers' comp. Department 12, Department 15, which is the county auditor's office, you know, they always want more and more.
(laughing).
Again, $1,100 for their...
They gotta search us in that department, let's cut there.
That's right, they do. Uh, and then training, you know, we're gonna have a new auditor this year, so, that increase is probably not unreasonable. Of course, you know, the old auditor, we sent him to training, and look what that's done for us.
(laughing).
And then, there's a $200 increase in the vehicle for the little pool vehicle they have out here, that's just, with the insurance came back in. So, really, you know, about $2,300, and 1,500, that is, 1,700 is for insurance for car, and then training for the new, new appointed official in that department. Uh, Department 17, County Treasurer's Office, again, they reduce their contract service, and really, there was a net reduction in, in their budget, $2,400.
Yeah.
There's really, and to give y'all kind of overview, there's really just a few departments, you know, the three or four departments really ask for any kind of increase. One here you'll see being, um, the Tax Assessor's Office, uh, the Election Office, Sheriff's Office, and IT, and, and as we get to those four, we'll explain what they're looking at. Of course, as Vincent, there were some, a couple of reductions in, in the Tax Assessor, you know, in their, their training, and their release equipment, and their printing and forms. Um, but they are asking for about $22,250 in their repair maintenance facilities, the drive-through window that we utilize for people to drive up and get through their license plates or pay their taxes, whatever, it's, the equipment's falling apart, and it's hard to work, they're saying they can't maintain it, what's the, the, what do you call those air vent things, or whatever. Those guys, springs or whatever, can't, can't continue to maintain those, so they wanna upgrade those and get those fixed where they work properly, and the push drawer there. And then out front, where they have the glass partitions, they wanna put some kind of frames in, make them a little more secure and a little more sturdy, like they did in that back room, so, uh, and if you go to that bottom, if you go to the last page, some of it's on there, and some of it kind of goes off. You can see some of the descriptions of the, of my requested increases.
Tax Assessor.
And if you look under Department 019, that repair maintenance facility, talk about replacing the drive-through equipment for 11,700, the drive-through drawer at 4,800, and then redo the lobby windows for security for 57, 5, 5750. You know, that's things that, if they can't come up to the drive-through and use it, useless, and there is a benefit to the people getting out of here quickly. So, that's, there's the increase there, and, and again, they've, they've offset that 22,500 by reducing, you know, some of their line, other line items, and trying to make up, they made up a little bit, four and a half of that, uh, request increase. And then the next apartment, 20, Council Precinct 1, uh, sees they're right where they need to be, and he's satisfied, the only increase there is the, is the longevity, same way, but precinct 2 didn't submit a, a budget.
Did, did not?
Did not, just like Court 1 did not.
Yes.
So, we assume that he's happy with it, and we punched in the same numbers as current year, except for the longevity. Precinct 3, you can see under there, the difference in there's, you've got two lines over on the right, requested and proposed, and requested is what was sent in by the elected official or department head, and the proposed is what I proposed for the budget based on revenue. So, you can see under, under precinct 3, uh, he's asked for a $3,000 increase in travel, from 10,000 to 13,000, uh, $50 increase in dues and publications, uh, and that's really the only, the only increase, really, is the, is the travel. Um, again, if, you know, when we, we increase this travel back, and gas only went to almost $4 a gallon, and when the gas went down to $2 a gallon, now, we didn't take that away from them, so, basically, they're still, they're getting more money for what they're driving for a mile than, than what they did back when the gas was $4 a gallon, so, uh, I've reduced that back down to $10, or $10,000.
I would say he does patrol.
I'm sure he does.
He, he does patrol.
Mm-hmm.
On all cases, with the constables, they do turn, they turn in a monthly mileage report, and we reimburse them, based on mileage, up to the amount of the budget.
Yes, sir.
And if y'all kind of wanna just make some notes as we go, when we get to the end, we can go back, and if y'all wanna address anything, we can, we can do it, just kind of give y'all, let y'all see what all's, what I proposed in there. And then precinct 4, same thing, he's asked for a $2,000 increase in, in fuel from 10 to 12,000.
He's trolling.
And then, and that's the only increase there, Department 24. The Department 25, County Jail, um, again, you can look on the... Backseat, they asked for, replace an air conditioner for $50,000, a transport vehicle for 37,000, and then to, go ahead and finish the other half of the jail doors that we didn't do from the jail inspection. So, the total capital outlays, 127,000, which is about $37,000 over, over, um, last year's capital outlay. The other increase is $7,100 for the inmate medical care, and I think they're pitting that out now, so that, that may be subject to change. And the balance of that is, um, the compensation benefits is gonna be the longevity, workers' comp, and jail.
Inmate medical, medical care. Do we have to get to over repair?
Yes, you know, that's, that was, uh, we knew that coming in, that wasn't gonna be an option, we had to fix those, those other eight doors in there, the electronic doors.
I would question a $50,000 air conditioner, though. I mean, I...
I don't know how many units that is.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Yeah. Must be a lot.
More than one?
It may be, uh...
I obviously don't know how many units they have in the jail, but they have several units.
I think there's 12 or 13 or so units on the roof over there at the jail that they... And we put in, you know, 40 or 60,000 dollars for maintenance to replace the ones in the other facilities, but we always, we've always budgeted, the ones that the jail will be replaced by the jail.
Individually.
Yeah, instead of through the maintenance department, so we can kind of keep a better, better cost on what the jail is. Case the state every side is reimburses for us running the state's jail facility, I don't know what kind of money we're talking about.
(laughing).
Yeah, I think that's gonna happen any time now, so...
Don't hold you worried.
Yeah. Yeah.
Was that in here?
On the page...
Six of 14.
Page 14, yeah, right there, the, the second, under number 025, to the left, you see Department 025?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, look, look over to the right, there's AC dash 50,000.
Oh, right.
Yeah, see Department 025, you look at the capital outlay, you know, 50,000, 37, and 40. That's the three, the request.
And the sliding doors are $40,000.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's, uh, those electronic controls on those doors at the jail are pretty expensive. And that's really the only, that is, you know, outside of the, outside of the inmate medical care increase they had in there.
I, I'm not sure if this is the time, but is there, uh, is there another way or a better way to, just take the air conditioning, for instance, to do a one-time, a one-time deal like we did with the radio tower? Instead of budgeting?
No, I mean, the problem is, if you, you, you know, as they go out, it's cheaper to replace one or two here and there than replace 13.
You're saying putting in a, a, just a separate line item for all air conditionings, not necessarily in the budget, not necessarily in the department?
Like, we know this one's bad, or whatever it is for $50, instead of putting it in the budget for the whole year, is there, is there not a better way to just take it like, like we did the radio tower, the one-time fund balance deal, or whatever?
See, I'm not so sure that they, that we have one that's bad, I think they've had some that are like nine or 10 years old, and so they wanna go ahead and replace it before it does go out.
All right.
So, like I say, every so many years, you get so much lifespan on one, they say, well, let's go ahead and replace it before it does go out.
Okay. I thought this was one they'd...
No, 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 they're, they're just wanting to...
If one's going out, they're gonna replace it now, they're not gonna wait till next year.
I got you.
And if they don't replace those ACs this year for some reason, well, then it doesn't get spent, if we don't let them.
If we don't let them.
Yeah.
Took water out of them.
Okay, so then we come down to Department 30, which is the sheriff's office, and we're gonna see some, y'all will see some changes here, uh, if you'll turn to that back page, 14 and 14, we'll just go down, start with compensation and benefits. You can see where they've requested for an increase of 445,211, and what they're requesting for that is five deputies, one detective. Let me go down a minute, so I can spread it, it's just not open on this page here. Is yours not clear out?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, five deputies, one detective, that's 343,738. They're also asking for additional certification pay, certificate pay. Uh, right now, certificate pay is 900 for an intermediate, 1,800 for an advanced, and 2,700 for masters, and they're wanting to take it to 2,000 for an intermediate, 3,000 for advanced, and I think 4,500 for masters, that's on the sheet, if you give them a compensation.
Is that on here?
No, it's in your, if you look at, if you pull this package, the sheriff's office, it'll have some handwritten numbers on the front.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. See that? Okay, now, if you turn it over, there's some, there's some requests. And if you turn it over, count in the cover sheet, one, two...
Yeah, how about?
Three, four, to this page here, it says, law enforcement telecommunicator, current rate, impressive rate.
Mine didn't have any pages, mine was here, too.
You looking at the same thing?
A long ago.
Gave them listed, isn't that in there? Isn't that in there, back in the... Yeah, that's, make sure you get the sheriff's office on there, do. Here, okay, now turn over to about the fourth page, this page right here. Y'all get that page? That's, that's where they're, yeah, there we go, that's, that's amounts to...
So they're asking to more than double?
Yeah, it's 80, about $88,000 worth of increase for certificate pay they're adding. Like I said, you see right there, here's the current rates, 900 for intermediate, 18 for advanced, 27 for a master, they want to go to 2,000 for intermediate, 3,000 for advanced, and 4,500 for a master. And then, same thing, increase the dispatchers from 900 to 1,400, 1,800 to 2,300, and 2,700 to 3,200, and then the jails, 900 to 14, 18 to 23, and 27 to 32.
Telecommunicator dispatcher?
Yes, and I have not, and you can see in their budget...
You didn't add that, too.
I have not included that certificate pay, and what I did was, went to, proposed, proposed three deputies, well, two deputies and a CID person, so three total positions, instead, and that's in the personnel. And then when you come down to, we've also, I've also decreased their fuel, gasoline and oil from 185 to 130. This is based on, you know, in 2016, they spent 95,000 on fuel, and they're on the line now to spend about 90,000, I think is what I, we looked at the other day. So, we took 55,000, we're still leasing 130, if they only spend 90 or 95, there's still, you know, 25, 35,000 dollars, that, in case there's a spike in fuel costs, middle of the year, we could cover that.
About 100,000, yes.
Yeah, about 100,000, on track for the year, yeah. 95, 6 last year, and right at 100 this year. Still giving them a cushion of about $30,000. And then the insurance, they, they were 2,000, we changed that to 1,000, that's just based on what the actual cost is. And they asked for a $3,000 increase in employee evaluations, I didn't, I've left that in there.
What?
Employee evaluations, that's pre-employment testing, and, you know, drug testing, and psychologicals and all that. And then, when you get to capital outlay, they've requested an additional 427,900, and what they're asking for, they're asking to replace six patrol vehicles for the high mileage, you can see that on their request, additional four vehicles, an air conditioner for 10,000, the cop sync annual payment for 51,000, they wanted four additional cop sync computers to go into four additional vehicles, four rifles, six portable radios, and the additional cop sync licenses, amount of 8,400. And what I proposed since we, since, you know, they were, again, we understand, we made the decision last year, instead of allowing and replacing six vehicles every other year, that we were going to replace four vehicles every year for the mileage.
That's an increase, huh?
So, and, and so I didn't know if they were confused or not, because I can't, I'm not talking to them, but I don't know if, you know, maybe he's wanting, he's asking for six to replace the high mileage, and I wasn't sure if he wanted six new cars for the six positions he's asking for, and replacing four for the high mileage, or, but evidently not. So anyway, what I, what I proposed in my budget was replace the four vehicles, which we told him we would do every year. And since we reduced the amount of deputies in, in half, and he only wanted four new vehicles, I proposed two vehicles, the air conditioner they needed, the cop sync annual payment, which has to be made, instead of four cop sync computers, two, two rifles, three portable radios, and all the cop sync licenses to go along with that. So basically, what I've done is, I've budgeted in here for half of what his request was. If you look at... His request and increase is going to be about, we can get to the end, talk about tax increases, but, no, his, his, his request and increase is 883,111 dollars over last year's budget. And my proposed increase is 343,306.
We want to discuss it in our way.
Well, that's up to y'all.
Well, not after that, I, I, I feel like we've got the vehicles covered, don't we? You know, by going to the four new ones every year.
But what he's doing, he's, you know, in, in, you know, when he, he requested six new positions, five patrol and one CID, and he wanted four new cars, which I don't understand, because he wants the car for everybody, so if he's got five patrol, if he's requesting five patrol, I would have thought he would request five cars, and he wanted a CID, but again, he only requested four cars, so I don't know what his plans are with, with the personnel, so we cut the personnel in half, I cut the cars in half, the equipment in half. That's basically where we're at.
How many cars do we have now, yet?
I don't have that, 47.
Isn't that everyone, I can take one home with them?
I think there's 47, or that could be, oh, there is, there's a bunch. Maybe 27.
No, that's right. And if you look up here under investigative aides, you'll see where he requested a $3,000 increase from 17 to 20,000, and we look across here and see where I proposed 50,000, that's not wrong. What that is, is, and again, that's, that can change, we're just not sure where that's going. That's, that's the notification I got, and all the sheriffs got, from Department of Public Safety stating that, that legislature has instructed them to collect a level, about 11 and a half million dollars in, in lab fees from jurisdiction, but they're going to start charging all of the law enforcement agencies, or ba, basically what they're going to do is they're going to charge whoever requests a lab analysis from their, one of their DPS labs, that that agency's going to have to pay for that, the cost of that analysis.
That's on the front of the mandate.
So again, it is, because the lab, in, in talking with our prosecutors, and with Carrie Kirby the other day, primarily, when they send a misdemeanor amount of controlled substance, marijuana, whatever, off to the lab, or DWI sample, the lab will hang on to it, and then they will contact the prosecutor, send him a letter saying, "I need something from your office, stating that you're going to prosecute this case in court, before we'll analyze this." So if he writes back and says, "Yes, we're going to court," well, then guess who's requesting the analysis?
We are.
Angelina County, so whether the guard is, whether the DPS stops that person, files them for DWI, our county attorney's office is requesting that lab analysis done, and so they're going to bill us for it. So...
That's not right.
The state's filing a case, and the state's charging us for the case that they filed, so go figure. So anyway, that, you know, I hadn't, we have, I have no way of knowing, I have no way of knowing how many, how many cases, I don't know if there's any way to know that.
What, that was mentioned today, but also was mentioned that something is going to increase the cost of the jail over there. I don't, I didn't exactly...
That's not till 2020, that's the Sandra Bland Act.
Okay.
That's, that's, and jail commission has until September of 2018 to, to finalize the plan and get it out, and all the jails have until September of 2020 to have it be implemented in place. So that's, you know, although there will be a cost, it won't be to us this next year. But yes, that's, that's the cost of, of something that is coming. But again, you know, it's just an estimate, you know, based on what the costs are for those, you know, if it's a, if it's a DNA sample, it's, it's $550, if it's a alcohol or a drug test, it's $75, if it's quantitative, it's another 75, and they always have to have the quantification, so it's $150 every time. So, you know, it's, there's just no, there's no way, I mean, you can't, I guess you could have somebody go back and pull every single case that's been filed in the last year or two, and kind of get an average of how many DWIs, how many sexual assaults, how many drug possession, how many deliveries, you know, and closest of all those, and try to figure out how many we had, and just assess one of these values to it, from exactly all that you could ever do that. But what I'm getting from other, other counties is they're predicting anywhere between 30 and 35,000 for mid-sized counties in our size. You know, Harris County, they got tired of DPS's lab a couple of years, and they have their own, they have a private lab up there now that does theirs, but, you know, we've had a couple of sheriffs that have said, "Okay, that's fine, we're going to pay for that, but now I'm going to send a bill to the state for every inmate that's booked into my jail, because they're booked in on a state charge, and we'll send them an invoice for every meal they have every day, the blankets they use, the healthcare that they, they incur, so I don't know who we send that, I mean, I'd be happy to do that, I just don't know who we send the bill to, and how we expect to collect it if they don't pay it. The lab can say, "You owe us money, and if you don't pay us, we're not analyzing any more of your samples."
Well, if you don't pay us, we don't turn your prison.
Yeah, but we're turning the black loose in our community, you know, that's...
Well, we came to the...
They don't care. That was, that was a threat a few years ago, Wayne Justice, put him in his front yard, we never did that. So, in, in other words, you can see, you know, his request was for an increase in compensation mission, 445,000, that included the certificate pay, what I'm proposing is 184,706, which is the increase in, in longevity pay, and workers' comp, and those fees associated with that. And that's, well, that's also for three deputies, and I don't care whether he uses, you know, I think what I gave was two, what I proposed was two deputies and one CID, instead of five deputies and a CID. You know, that's, again, that's his choice, I, you know, to look at the makeup of the department, I have my own ideas, you know, I don't know if we're, if we're concerned about patrol, are we not maybe heavy in CID, you know, if you, if you get more people on the streets, and you prevent more crimes, is what they're saying, by having more people on the street, will prevent more crimes, and you need less investigators, you know.
When I worked law enforcement, I wasn't investigator, I was a patrol officer, I was a narcotics officer, I was other type.
Animal control officer?
Animal control, it didn't matter.
Well, and that, you know, again, thing is... Anyway. You know, I, I probably would, it, it lives in my own mind, so, and I don't run sheriff's office, so, but I have run a law enforcement agency, and there's been others here that have been involved in law enforcement, and, and again, I, I don't know that, looking at the makeup of the department now, could there be things done different that would make a huge difference now, and yes, there are, I mean, you know, it's, again, one of the things I'd recommend was, you know, if you get, if you take four deputies and put one on their shift, now you have six on a shift, so you've increased by one. If you take those four deputies and you put a support shift out there for the last four hours of the day shift, and the first four hours of nights, you'll say 3 o'clock in the afternoon to 3:00 in the morning, now guess what, you've got nine officers out there on all those shifts, not just sit, you know, so, and I think we can do that with current manpower, but I, you know, I don't run the sheriff's office, but I do know it's going to be, if you look at the numbers at the bottom here, when I give you these tax rate numbers, and the amount of increase, I can't look at people out there and say, "This is what we need to do." You know, it's hard to, you know, and of course, I've, you know, I've heard the old, the old Facebook gloom and doom song, song that I put out there, but I hear it from people every day, and I think, y'all hear from people every day, as a matter of fact, I know you have, because I've been told, I talked to my commissioner, I've told him, so I know y'all heard it, and so, you know, you know, there may be people out there, and Donald Lindbergh is probably one of the richest people in, in this deep East Texas part of the state, and probably can afford a bunch more tax, tax raises, and, and I could probably afford, but the fact of the matter is...
That obvious.
Are we getting, or, or we, as elected officials and department heads, being as effective and efficient with their tax dollars now, before we ask them for more money, you know, so...
And Lindbergh taxes us pro.
Well, that's right, you're...
Close to 90.
Close to 90. I think Donald Lindbergh is 90?
He's been taxing us pro.
So, anyway, that's, that's a...
Well, while we're on the...
Huh? Oh, so that's, but again, I propose, he asked for six, I proposed three, you see there, 184,000?
That's what I'm...
He's asked, he, pardon? We haven't got there yet, we're going to get there at the bottom. But he's asked for six, I proposed three, and that's just to meet in the middle, and then we'll, the court will make that decision. He's asked for basically 10 cars, you know, six new ones, and, or six replacement and four new ones, and I've given him the four replacement and two new ones. And then, you know, four rifles, and four this, and four that, and we've given him two for the patrol guy, because I don't know if the CID guy needs a rifle, he can call one of the patrol guys, bring his rifle over there, let him use it. Yes, sir.
I can't read their mind, because I need some new dope, folks.
We haven't done it yet, we'll get that, we'll get that here in a minute. So that's where we're at with sheriff's office, again, you can see his requested amount is 883,000 over last year, my proposed is 343,000 over last year, that's basically manpower and stuff, half of what he's requested, and again, that's, and, and that's tough to do. We get to the bottom, and we'll see where we can back out.
We leave the sheriff.
Okay.
The telephone stopping, we didn't touch on that?
I have not.
They want to be compensated for using the telephone?
Yeah, but only, the, only...
They have, they have county telephone, because the county's paying their telephone bill.
Oh, they want an increase?
Well, no, they're not wanting, they're want, instead of the, they want to leave this amount in the budget, I think, but what they want to do is have us, instead of just paying the telephone bill, give them $1,000.
For a year?
Yeah, Angelina says...
Yeah, for just the sheriff, chief deputy, captain, and lieutenant over patrol, uh, CID, is there?
Sheriff, chief deputy, patrol captain, CID lieutenant, jail warden, and assistant jail warden.
Yeah, two in the jail, but I wouldn't, you know, so...
I use my own cellphone.
Again...
I pay my own cellphone.
I think they use a county cellphone.
Yeah, they...
Both individuals.
I cut out two cellphones, if I'm personal.
And the reason for that, I mean, if we're paying for their phone, there's no cost to them, why, I mean, what, why would we want to just pay them money, they, there's no difference, because if they're thinking the public information, yeah, if they're thinking Public Information Act, their private phones, subject to it also, if they can take county business on it, so, you know, that's, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what, I know, I, when I was in law enforcement, we had a law enforcement rate for cellphones, which was cheaper than what everybody else was getting for, but my city paid for that, I didn't pay for it, and I had my own, and really didn't use, use the city one for the city, and that was it. Usually most times, it was in a bag, and that's back then, we had the bag phone. Unless, unless they've still got a, a lot cheaper rate, where they could make money off this, I don't know. But again, their phone was furnished, and I, you know, I didn't change that line item, so, I mean, that's going to be up to the quarters, whether we want to write them a check, or we want to just let it continue to, to, you know, I can't ever, I can't, I haven't been able to find out, and I've tried for 11 years, how many phones we are paying for over there. You know, we got... $28,000 in their, in their budget, they're requesting 30, so I don't know what their landline phone bill is every, every month.
Not, not very much, most of that...
Couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's just long distance calls.
Their phone service through AT&amp;T?
I think so.
Yeah, their cellphone service, yeah, I'm assuming it's still through AT&amp;T.
That's what you can find out.
I think we, AT&amp;T won't talk to us.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I talked to the sheriff, said it counts. Yeah, I talked to the sheriff, his account. So...
We just won't pay that bill.
Didn't they tell you?
Somebody will.
Yeah, it is AT&amp;T.
How much is AT&amp;T bill?
Uh, eight hundred dollars.
Each month, if I seen?
Eighteen hundred a month?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred a month? Wow.
That's less, that's less than ten thousand, ten thousand dollars a year.
And then they, then they...
So the twenty-eight thousand, what's about?
And then, yeah, landline, which is really the long distance call.
Right, right. Everything else is the same.
And that's about a hundred and twenty-five.
A month more.
Hey, somebody answer the question. What is a professional standards officer?
We don't know. It's somebody that makes more than a sergeant but less than a lieutenant.
And does.
I think he, I think make sure that they do, they get their mandatory training hours a year. I've never had, I didn't have a professional standards officer. I guess, I guess when I was chief, I was a professional standards officer.
My chief was a professional.
Yeah, so I said, I guess when I was chief, I was a professional. When I, when I was patrolman and sergeant, my chief was, he made sure I was, my professional standards were up to par. You know, but I think really, and I don't know, I think really what they do, Rick, you may know, I think they, they, again, make sure that their deputies have all their training hours they have to have. If they have to have any vaccination, I don't know. I can't answer that. So maybe they, maybe they...
Compliance position.
Yeah, maybe.
Just like ensure that, just like you said, compliance position.
Maybe they look at policies and, and of course, you know, the sheriff's the one that's gonna be the one that says, yeah, this is my policy, so I, I don't know. I can't, you know. I've asked that question and you kind of get, well, there are certain things that we have to do where they're mandated that we have to keep up with to keep our licenses and...
Just an interesting note in that line item, but last year the sheriff department spent less than eighteen thousand dollars.
Anywhere?
In that line item, utility telephone.
Oh, yeah, we just said, yeah, ninety-six hundred and then about twelve hundred for the landline. Yep. Tim, what you want to do, Jim? He's requesting thirty thousand. Post training man...
There's no justification for that?
No, I don't see no reason to increase it on that.
Well, here's the thing. Look at fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Fourteen has been seventy-seven hundred. Fifteen, eighty-nine hundred. I don't know what in the world happened in sixteen. He went from eighty-nine hundred to seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five.
Is some of their cops saying they use that?
Well, that's your air, that's where their air cards, they've got to have the air cards.
Which continues.
Yeah, which is a, which is an annual.
I think that maybe that's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars or so.
Well, that's about, I think those air cards are about ten dollars a month, aren't they?
Yeah, it's a little more than that.
And we got, how many, how many, twenty-six car, how many cars we have with cop, how many cop sync computers we have? In cars?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so that's, at ten dollars, two hundred and sixty. Two hundred, should be about two hundred and sixty a month for the air card for those. And I think that if you look in their request, I think that was part of their...
Oh, I'm sorry. The cop sync is, is the eight hundred dollars a month.
Okay, cop sync's eight hundred a month. Okay, what is their cellphone?
Does that come out of, out of the utility telephone?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because it's a, it goes through, it goes through AT&amp;T, it's in it like a...
So that explains the difference in fifteen and sixteen?
Yes.
So in seventeen, I mean, we still weigh, in his budget in seventeen, we went to twenty-eight thousand.
I don't see his paying. His cellphone bill in seventeen. That'll have, on the work.
I, I don't know what's there.
Stop and travel now, it's one, four hundred and seventy-six dollars for sixteen, three thousand and seven.
Didn't have one in sixteen. Didn't have one for most of sixteen.
What's that?
Stop.
So...
We had one in fifteen, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thousand and forty-two.
I don't know unless that air card is included with their cellphone, because all we're paying AT&amp;T is seven, seven nine seven. So that may include the air cards in with their cellphone bill.
That's all their cellphone, all of them?
Another thing we've, we've paid this year is an AT&amp;T bill and then consolidated communications.
Can we just get the front page? We don't know about that stuff. Normally those real state cops think that's all that's on there, so I don't know.
We're not paying, other than that, we're not paying the other cellphone bills this year for the sheriff's office. So it may be that they moved to AT&amp;T and that includes their, their cellphone bills plus the cop sync and plus the air card.
What's the balance today? What's the balance today?
Fifty-six, fifty-six hundred dollars. I'll have to, I'll have to research that and see what's going on.
Well, I guess my question is, when you're, when you're requesting a thousand dollars, a thousand dollar staffing for each of those six positions, if we don't approve that thousand dollar staffing, then they might not need to be in there, huh? I mean, that's, because if they're planning on taking that six thousand out that's currently in there, it must be in there sitting there not being used or something. Am I thinking that right, David Gray?
I think so, yes. I think you're right. I think they included in their budget proposal, the stipends.
Yeah, this is coming out of forty-seven oh one, utility telephone. All right, let's move now and get, and get down to the bottom of this and we get back to... Let's move, get the rest of this in there. We still gotta get you all done. Oh. Combined total of three hundred something. I think that was, is that sheriff's end due? Well, he looks at, we go down to election. Should be the next department, department thirty-two. Um, there's a, a request for contract services, an amount of six thousand dollars. And that was to hire, bring on a temporary part-time person just during the elections times where they've got to get all the machines up, they've got to get everything programmed and all they do over there. And then there was an increase, request of five hundred dollars in dues and publications, fifteen thousand dollar request in election expenses, and then a five hundred dollar request in telephone. And again, I'm, you know, sure there may be a lot of long-distance calls being made for people that called in about their voters' cards or whatever. I've got this in here. Let it go. There it is. Connie Brown sent a letter. Said, regardless she has for full-time perks realized that during a odd number of years they don't need one, so she's asking, um, again, looks like four hundred hours at fifteen dollars an hour that they'd use for early voting in election day.
What about that twenty-nine hour restriction? Are we...
This is contract.
This would be contract, yeah. This wouldn't be one of our employees. And again, I, I didn't think that, you know, you know, it, it may have been a little different when Midget was the election administrator because she had all her staff over there. She could have helped her, you know, during the slow times and we got three people up there and, and maybe they can, maybe they can't, but, um, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think that was unreasonable trying to get somebody here as important, as important as the elections are.
Yes.
We need to make sure that those go smooth and don't have any hiccups. Uh, and again, fifteen thousand election expenses. Next year's a big election. As you can see, ninety-three and fourteen, sixty-nine, then a hundred and twenty-seven and sixteen. This year's down to a hundred and ten. Of course, we got the constitution amendment election probably coming up here. Next year would be another big election, so if you want to increase that to twenty-five. So overall, total increase to twenty-two thousand. Election. Then you go down to public health and welfare. Again, this is, you know, this is our indigent healthcare, which, you know, we're acquired by law. And you can see it's, it's, I mean, you just, this is one of the things you never know, looking. Fourteen was five oh eight, basically, and two fifteen is five hundred and one thousand. Sixteen is a million, one twenty-one, and we budgeted eight ninety this year. I don't know if we'll make that or not. That's just one of those things. It depends on how many people need healthcare, whether indigent. And come back and prove, we have to, you know, by statute, we, you know, we have to fund thirty thousand dollars per individual, for any individual, and, and determine, we can determine an indigent here in residents of Angelina County. And that may be a hundred and it may be a thousand. You just don't know.
Coming every day.
And then our ambulance contract falls under that. But again, there was no increase request in that department. Move down to emergency management. Training, uh, question is for a thousand dollars in training. We've got our parks curators now going to assist with emergency management, we need some. That's one of those things, again, until you need them, we don't need them. But when you need them, you're glad, when the hurricanes, you know, coming across Jesper County, Pope County, Tyler County headed this way, we certainly need, we're glad we got them out there making sure the resources are ready to go and, and help support people when it gets past us. And again, the compensation benefits, that's just, we're moving, uh, some of the parks, allocating it into nine-one-one, we can be into, uh, emergency management. We can reclaim some of that back on the C, MPG, E, MPG grant from the state, so we have to, you know, that's...
We can get some of that back.
Yeah. And that reflecting revenues up top. So that's basically, you see, add the twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, twenty thousand, five hundred, that is in salary benefits and that's, again, we, we send, we have to send reports monthly to the state. We got out of court early. Really not much change. County extension. They didn't submit one, but based on my recommendation, my proposed budget shows a three thousand dollar decrease in utilities, electricity. When you look back three years, seventy-four hundred, sixty-three hundred, sixty-three hundred. You know, they, we, we budgeted ten thousand and there's no sense to continue to budget ten thousand when, when, you know, the last, I mean, there's three dollars difference in the last two years and it's, they're running pretty consistent. Collection department, no change. District judges, really, um, overall, forty-nine dollar increase to their budget, just moving some things around. District clerk's office, same thing. They didn't submit a budget. So they're happy with what they have. I wish we could say the same for the county clerk. District attorney's off, county clerk didn't hurt us too bad. County, district attorney's office, you know, again, reduction in, in their compensation benefits because, you know, we got a new district attorney in there and Art was here for, since the eighties. We had a pretty, a reduction there. Of course, he's, she, he's got a thousand fifty-three capital outlay.
I'm looking, you said it out, Jim, did he, did he put that number in? Didn't have an explanation.
Okay, he just put it in. It may be computers that may, that may come out of there. I don't know if that's, he did, of course, and I'll disadvantage you. There's a few of these elected officials that have stopped me around the county in the last sixty days wanting to know the possibility of getting an additional personnel.
Please, one of them?
And I've, yeah, and I've, again, told them that odds are slim to none, that, you know, again, you know, we've got so many, they were such a big request from one area, that, you know, if we do that, part of that, we're certainly not gonna be able to afford to...
Help nobody.
Help others, you know. But it's hard to, and I understand, you know, you, you, you know, as more cases are filed and it's more, more demand on you, they handle all the CPS cases. They've got one full-time, one prosecutor that's assigned full-time CPS. You know, it's, uh, it's something that gets shorthanded and, and misdemeanor courts are no different, you know. Probably six or eight cases to one. But they move faster, so. All right, so that's basically not much.
The attorney is totaled three hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, difference, well, there's a, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Even I did nine dollars. And next, data processing. Hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollar increase. What we're seeing is, again, our equipment's getting old and what we've historically done is we waited till we either max out capacity or things break and then we go ahead to find a bunch of money to fix things. So what the IT department is, is, is looking at doing is replacing twenty-five percent of our computers every year. So every four years, the computers will be, because turned over, uh, they've got a thirty-eight thousand dollar increase in capital outlays for the licensing. Increase in, in the, replacing a server and all the licensing for the new computers and, uh, the server, so... You know, servers, again, of course, you know, will last longer than what the computers do, but we just need to increase, increase capacity, but, um, every four years, we will, we'll turn over all the computers in the county and keep those updated, new licenses and new software, so. And again, if we don't have that in our day and age, we shut down.
When our email presses, it takes two weeks to back up?
Get back up. Get back up, and when you can't e-file, the state says you e-file things, and the computers crash.
City Logan is on a backup system, or rather, they use a little service, is that something, an option that we can look at?
You know.
I don't really.
Well. We're supposed to be redundant here and have that capability, and that's something that I'm trying to figure out why it's not working. But again, what they'll do is they'll claim, when it's our fault it goes down.
Well, this is the thing, though, with city Logan, when it's their property goes down, all they do is call over and, you know, have them, you know, to send the backup. So once they get back up, they've got all the stuff for backup for them hours, so.
Only sit it a week for us.
But they're paying for a service, they are paying for a service. Because it, I'll be honest with you, it's hard for us, I can only imagine what other people is, it's hard for us to operate with that anywhere.
I know. Yeah, trust me. All right. The courthouse maintenance. Their requested difference was nine-hundred-and-thirty-four miles, four thousand, sixty-six difference. Electricity, we took thirteen thousand out of that, again, you know, ninety-four, ninety-five, eighty-nine. You know, we're on track to spend ninety-one or two this year, so. I didn't see any need to leave that up, there's thirteen thousand in there, so.
That's square thousand coming off of that.
Gas and oil, the same thing, you know. Fourteen, then gone to ten, seven, and they're on track to do about, I think, nine thousand, ten thousand this year, so. And then we go into part of seventy-five, which is our, just our general fund. Central places increased, central prison districts, you know, budget went up, twenty-three thousand dollars. Reduction in animal control lifted by two thousand, contract services went down to five thousand. The contribution to the health district went up seventeen thousand. We put a new item in there this year, waste station expenses, five thousand, and that's just, again, if it's not spending, it stays in the fund. We've had some failures at the, some of the parking areas this year, we're having to replace. It's just better to be able to identify those costs.
And then the utilities.
And then, yeah, utilities, and then contingency. From one eighty to two hundred, that's just basically what's. Yeah, Eddie likes round numbers. DPS, we've had three thousand dollars in there, then, and two hundred, six hundred, three hundred, so we just reduced that by a thousand. And then again, here's that communications upgrade, we saw, we transferred that in from fund balance up top, here's where it's coming back out. Communication upgrade through in seventy-one, five thirty-six. Just a piece. Eight hundred dollar increase in training, five hundred in office supplies. Just peace precinct two, no increase. When I say no increase, that's other than, like I said, the longevity and the, you know, in the workers' comp, a few hundred dollars. All the way through JP four. And that's it, so we get down to the bottom line here. When you look at total, the requested expenditures comes to twenty-five million, eight thirty-nine, three seventy-two, which is a shortage of. One million, six-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars. My proposed is the revenue, expenditure already is a one million, seventy thousand, one sixty-five. Last year, we transferred eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand in from fund balance to balance of budget. If we did that same thing this year, we'd still be, based on requested from departments, seven-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars short. On my proposed, be two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. So basically, the difference is, right now. Our proposed effective, our proposed, our, our, our effective tax rate. For next year is going to be point four-five. Eight-eight, two-six, or point four-five, eight-eight, forty-five point eight cents. And in order to. A one-cent tax increase, to increase the tax by one cent would generate three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. So if we had to generate a hundred, one-point-six-one-eight million dollars, that means we would have to go up to about four-point-seven-five cents. Well, four-point, four-and-a-half cents would generate a million, six-hundred-and-eleven thousand, so we'd be about seven thousand dollars we'd have to find somewhere. So let's say four-and-a-half cents, so you add that to our effective rate, at forty-five, eighty-eight, that means our current adopted tax rate issue would be. Point five-oh-three-eight, so fifty, between fifty and a quarter and fifty and a half cents, from forty-six, one-eight. To do the proposed, it'd take a, a tax increase of. Hundred, one-point-oh-seven-six, be, one-point-oh-seven-four, be three cents, so we'd save a penny and a half. And that's, again, above the effective rate, which would take us to, you know, our tax rate would go to almost forty-nine cents, four-point-four-eight-eight-eight.
And how many dollars we got to take out?
If you look at current rate of point four, four-six-one-eight, to the five-oh-three, next year, we'd have to raise our tax rate over this year, four-point-two cents. To go to the requested, requested rate of, of, of amount of twenty-five million, eight thirty-nine, if we go to the proposed rate, we'd have to raise it two-point-seven cents. Or again, you know, we could, we could continue to transfer money into there from fund balance. And in the past, we've been able to do that to balance the budget, and at the end of the year, we either had an increase in sales tax. Or with the reduction in the amount that departments didn't spend that they budgeted, we've never had to really actually take that out of fund balance, does that make sense?
Yeah.
We've, we've brought it down to budgeted, up to eight-hundred thousand, last year, we brought it down to budgeted. And with an increase in sales tax, and then a reduction in the amount expended from each department's budget, that falls back in, we've never had to dip into it. I don't think that's going to be the case this year. I don't, I don't, you know, we won't know, because we're still only halfway through the year, but. I think we're probably going to happen to use some of that that we transferred in this year, not a whole lot. But we will, for the first time, since, I think, I've been here. We'll have to dip some into it, so I'm concerned about continuing to do that.
But just to stay where we're at, where we're at right now is incorrect.
Uh, no.
We'll have to dip into it.
Yeah, either way, yeah. Oh, you mean, you mean current year budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If we kept our budgets like they are this year for next year.
Oh, no, I mean.
No increase. No increase in budget.
Well, if we didn't do, I don't know that we've, well, that, okay, then you, if you take this year's revenues, that agree, right there, right there number there. It'd be two, twenty-four, two-twenty-nine-oh-two, right? I mean, it's going to be hard to really figure, we can kind of give you an estimate.
Yeah.
And take.
Won't be the same because of longevity, I mean, that's going to affect every department. So salary, with the longevity and the change in the workers' comp, every department is going to have an increase.
Yeah, a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah. But roughly here, let me see.
But I mean, if we, if we base, well, look at it here, look at your sheet, that shows where we would be using the effective tax rate of four-five-eight-eight, and see what, what, what we'd be.
If we use the two thousand seventeen.
The expenses stay the same except for the, except for the longevity. Basically, right, right now, our tax rate's point four-six-one-eight. If we go with the effective rate based on certified appraisal's issue, we'll go to point four-five-eight-eight, so it'll drop down about three hundreds of a cent. From, you know, from four, four-five-eight, four-six-one-eight to four-five-eight-eight. To generate the same revenues as we did last year, but we've got a few more expenses with just the longevity.
Using, using last year's expenditures and this year's revenue, we would need four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
And last year, we needed, yeah, last year, we needed eight-hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Now, that won't be exact because, again, the longevity and so forth.
But we would need less money because our values, you know, are different this year, based on revenues, values, because the revenue's rough.
Say five hundred thousand.
But we need half of what we needed last year to balance the budget. Just to remain the same service, same level, but, you know.
And you could take that out of fund balance instead of raising taxes?
Yeah, like we have, like we, historically, like we've done over the last, like I said, the last nine years, we've basically, we went down three cents one year in two thousand nine. Ten, we came up a penny and a half, eleven, we came a penny and a half back where we were in two thousand nine, and since then, it's been the effective rate to generate the same revenue, we haven't raised, raised the taxes. So that's why, since two thousand nine to seventeen, which is nine budget years, the budget, the tax rate has actually changed six, ten thousand to a cent. Because that's, that's the effective rate, I mean, that's what it takes to generate that same revenue. You know, if, if, if your, if your values or your property goes down, then your effective rate goes up, because you have to charge more, you get more tax rate to generate that same revenue. If your values go up, then your tax rate goes down, which is kind of what happened this year, and I think, you know, and I say a lot of it offset because of the. And we'll see, we'll see a difference next year because of these left-in industries, you know, they're tearing the factory down this year and going, and so that will be totally wiped off of that. Even though it's an empty building, it'll show value. But when it's, when you pick it up and haul it off, and it's not there any longer, there is no value, so. We're still going to see some, some reduction in commercial values. And guess what, when that happens, when the commercial goes down, it rolls over to property values, personal property. So, you know, there's, so when that happens, and then we come in and say, we need more. Not only are the property owners, do you have a lower tax that's going up because the commercial value's going down, now we're putting more on top of it.
Can we look at it another way?
You can.
If we look at.
I have your glasses.
Everything you've proposed, all the way through, even the jail. At that point, where would we be on raising taxes?
Well, that's what I'm saying, my proposal, two-point-seven cents, that's if we don't transfer any in from fund balance.
Can, can you give me a dollar figure that we have to transfer in?
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, a million, seventy, one sixty-five. If you look at the.
Now, I'm excluding the sheriff now.
Oh, well, I don't.
Everything, everything down, including the jail, but not sheriff. We need to just visit what we can do.
If you go, if you take any of that million, million. Oh-seven-oh-one-six-five and take out the sheriff's increase, which is.
Three forty, three forty-three.
Which is eight, eighty-three, one-eleven?
Well, he's talking about your proposal.
I know.
Your proposed sheriff.
Oh, three forty-three, three oh-six, yeah.
If you take that out, then, because see.
Seven, is it the seven?
Yeah, it's a, the, the, the proposed is a shortage of a million, fifty-seven, six-sixty-five.
Got a million, seventy, one sixty-five.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, mine's.
A million, seventy.
A million?
One, oh-seven-oh, one-sixty-five.
Six-five.
Yeah, and when you take out the three forty-three, three oh. Three forty-three, three oh-six.
Three oh-six. Seven-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, eight fifty-eight, eight fifty-nine. Seven-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, eight fifty-nine.
Which is what we would have to transfer in from fund balance to balance, last year, we transferred in eight twenty-eight.
Now, we've already have a transfer in proposed.
Yeah.
The three, the three seventy.
We're already doing the, but, I mean, that's, that's, we know that's just, that's an expense, because that's for the communication system.
So we could safely cover that by transferring.
We'd have, I mean, basically, we'd be covering, we'd be transferring in a million, total, a million, seven, yeah. A million, well, right at a million dollars, still over a million dollars. Seven seventy plus the three seventy-one. Million one.
Yeah.
Yeah. But again. All things staying equal, we would use, we would use the three seventy-one, that's a given, that we're going to do with the communications, and with the other seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand. We just don't know if at the end of the year, you know, we would give, I mean, it's, I think, and that's safety, that's safety net if sales tax, sales tax bottoms out, or. Something happens and everybody has to use every penny in their budget and doesn't return anything. You know, sheriff's office is going to return, there's some that return a thousand dollars, some that return. Fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, so it all, I said, we don't use, we haven't had to use any of that five, six, seven hundred thousand we've transferred in the past.
That's kind of where I'm going with that, you know, he had three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars budget, and if, if we, we or him or whoever moved that money around. Then he can still get stuff that he wanted at the same price on a lot of that, you know.
Well. How much did he turn back?
Hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-five.
Well, yeah, I was counting the jail, too.
Yeah, the jail.
Jail and the.
Well, but the jail, he could transfer that to the sheriff's office, I mean, if he's not.
It's three-hundred-and-thirty thousand total.
Well, see, my proposal's three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, to give him what I, what I proposed, which is half of what he's asking.
So we can actually give him what he had last year and give him that.
If we transfer whatever he, but you got, I mean, the thing is, a lot of those things.
If all things.
If they all turn out, exactly, yeah.
Well, that's same way, I mean, that's true with all of our budgets.
Well, sure, sure.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you run out of road, stuff for hard-type roads, you just don't do no more roads. If he runs out of stuff for inmate supplies, he's still, we still got to, we've got to find the supply, and we can't just tell the inmates, sorry, you're not going to pay for the next three months. You know, and fuel, the same way. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that are. That aren't, you can't just stop in some areas. Now, again, there are some areas where it's continually every year been left the same, because at one time he needed that.
That's what I, that's my fault.
And now they're not, but, you know, and I guess we could, we could get. We could get closer and to being right, you know, on the dollar, or closer to the dollar. And then have to deal with it if it comes up, you know, if something did go south on us, we, I mean, we'd have to come back and make arrangements to take care of that. Because all we can do is, is base this year's. Proposed numbers on what actual expenditures were for those three years before that, and not on what was budgeted those three years before we would actually spend it, expended.
I, I think I understand where you're going, Mr. If you look at just the change in the salaries, the additional personnel that he's asking. Would, would be about three-hundred thousand dollars.
What he's asking from not proposed, he's talking about proposed. He's talking about if we did the proposed, and he had, with, he, he turned back in three-hundred thousand last year.
So giving him the.
Yeah, the, and we'll say that that's between the sheriff's office and jail, he would have to take what he turned back from the jail and transfer that to the sheriff's office, and give him the three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. And he could take that and reallocate it towards this three-hundred-and-forty-three that, that we're proposing. So he's saying, without us doing anything, any increase. Yeah, any increase to the sheriff's office, or, you know, he could, he could take what he returned from the sheriff's office in jail and do that within his budget, be budget neutral, pretty budget. Except for about, well, for three-third to three-forty-three, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, but that's cutting it down to the penny.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's, I mean.
I know it's dangerous.
That's exactly.
If we can do it without raising taxes.
Because this year, he may only turn back two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars, so, you know, if he's, if he constantly turns back three-hundred-and-thirty thousand every year, then we kind. then we kind of probably know that he doesn't need three hundred and thirty thousand. But if he turns back three hundred and thirty this year and a hundred and ninety next year, and the year before was a hundred and twelve, you know, you just, you know. But again, a lot of that is our fault. I mean, you know, this is a budget, folks. And, you know, when you run for office or you apply for a position as a director of an office, it's your responsibility to run that department or that office. And when, when I send out the notice that you need to submit your budget request and you need to be diligent about figuring out what it's gonna cost you to run your department and not pad a bunch of stuff thinking, well, and then throughout the year, we let them transfer fifty thousand here from this line item down to here to buy something. Because, oh, we've got the money and we can get it this year at this price. Um, you know, and if we, as a, as a governing body, held their feet to the ground and said, well, you budgeted it for this. You know, if you didn't need it for this, it shouldn't have been budgeted, we could have put that somewhere where it was needed. Not put it in there so that later on during the year, you can find something you'd like to have and that you come in here and want to transfer. You know, so, and I hear it, I hear, well, the commissioners transfer money all the time. Well, the statute allows commissioners to have a carryover fund. They don't authorize any other department or elected eight Austin as candidate to do that. Uh, and that is because of the price of the cost of y'all's equipment and things like that. And that's why they've done that. Uh, so that as, as y'all can build up money as you go, and then you have money to do that instead of going to the taxpayers all the time. But as, as a normal department, you know, your responsibility and obligation is to present and submit to me a budget request sheet that tells me really what it's, what it's gonna take. And I know everybody pads a little bit here and there, but you don't have to pad ninety thousand dollars to one line item.
I'm not bad at that.
It's at this chair, I think. But I mean, I, I, I mean, and that's just it in a nutshell. That's, I mean, that's just the way it is. And, and, you know, we, and it was difficult when, I'm telling you all, when I came into office, we had, and the council was here, you know, we had some knockdown drag guys with every, every department in here because they were just used to putting, and nothing ever changed. Well, didn't need to because they had a bunch of money and they could move around. But we were struggling to take care of anything else. So, uh, we started making, I mean, looking at it line item by line item every year and cutting, cutting, cutting and, and allocating and moving and transferring where things needed to be till we thought we had a pretty good true budget. And then, you know, and the same with the sheriff's office, it's, you know, but, and you can look, he had a hundred and seventy-nine thou, a hundred and seventy-something thousand dollar fuel bill back up a few years ago. But, you know, and, and we had to fund that because that's what the cost of fuel was. And we just never took it away in anticipation, maybe, you never know, it may jump back up. But it's been three years now and it hasn't, so is it time to reduce it? And I said, yeah, so let's, let's take about fifty-five thousand out of there because we're not on track to use but a hundred thousand this year again, and that's still gonna give them a pretty good cushion. So, and I'm, and I'm not picking on the sheriff's office, y'all don't think that, it's just, that's the biggest elephant in the room. And that's where forty-one percent, almost forty percent, uh, of our general fund budget goes to is, is law enforcement. Forty-one goes to law enforcement, that counts, constables, but they're a minute part of that. When you're talking about over eight million dollars, um, for the sheriff's office and four million dollars or so for the jail, so, you know, out of a twenty-five million dollar budget, you've got eleven million that's going into the jail and sheriff's offices. That's, that's the elephant in the room, and that's, that's where the general fund, when you talk about thirty-two departments and one of them getting forty-one percent. It's, uh, or two of them, sheriff's office and jail.
I got an help from too.
Thank you.
I got an help.
In your, uh-oh. What are you reading?
I just don't put no social media.
Yeah. And that's it. I mean, again, you know, does the sheriff's office need more people? Probably do. They could probably, could they probably allocate their resources they have now in a, in a more effective manner and efficient manner? Probably so. But every law enforcement agency in this country can use more people. There's not a doubt. And, and I guarantee you, if I sent a letter to every sheriff or police chief in the state of Texas or in the United States for that matter, said, two questions, do you have enough personnel? And are you paid enough? The answer to both of those is gonna be no. You can't, you can't put enough officers on the street for a department and you can't pay an officer enough money. You, there, there's not enough money in the world, not what they deserve. So that being said, you do what you can do and you don't, I mean, I can't shut down Amy's office and, and take two or three of her employees to give them more. Uh, I can't take a, one, each one, a road name from each one of y'all's, y'all's precincts so we can give them four deputies. Uh, because everybody at this county, and we've done this over the last ten years, all of our departments are working at bare bones. They have to have what they have, and nobody's salary is, has been increased more than the sheriff's office over the last five years.
Well, they haven't raised in ten years, twenty years, something.
Sorry?
Nothing. So, you know, it's, uh, that's where we're at, you know, we're looking at right now, depending on what y'all wanna do, based on request and proposed, and folks, I'm gonna tell you all, this isn't easy, sitting here trying and to, you know, when you got requests from almost all the departments out there of something, when you see them, they don't put it here because they've already asked me and I've already told them. It, you know, it doesn't look good. Uh, you know, and they know that. But it's hard to look at the clerks in the face when I go in their office or the county attorneys when I go in their office, uh, gear guys when I see them around the streets. And, and, you know, they're saying, well, you gave them everything in the world, what did we get?
Absolutely.
We're not, we're not, we're not as important as they are, where they are. And, and without any department in this county, this county shuts down operations. Y'all, Amy decides, like, yeah, okay, we'll show y'all. Y'all go to the house. And if she tells them to go to the house, guess what? We gotta pay them.
They got to quit.
There's AG's opinion, says if the elected official shuts their office down, we gotta pay them.
That's right.
They don't have to take vacations, sick time, comp time.
That's right.
If the elected official tells them to go to the house, so they tell them to go to the house, guess what? You can't get a birth certificate, can't get death certificate, can't file a case, you can't probate a will. I mean, we're just.
Don't get no big ideas.
That's absolutely it. So, I mean, it shuts down county government. That's, so, the sheriff's office, yeah, they're very, very important and very vital operation in this county and the safety of these people. But they're just a part, and, and they have to have all these other departments for them to work. I, I know, I've done that. I've been there. Been over twenty years alone. So don't tell me I don't, I don't care about law enforcement. You know, you'd be, you'd be crazy to, to be against law enforcement.
Well, yeah.
I know Terry is, he doesn't care about law.
What I've been told.
But, I mean, it's, it has nothing to do with this. And I don't say I'm proud of you guys. I'm telling you, it's, you know, because I know kind of to y'all, I've seen y'all's blood pressure go up and make you go, go out and go off. But, you know, this isn't personal, folks. This, you know, I've never done a budget yet with any kind of personal feelings involved in it. It's all professional and it's based on what I'm hearing from the public. And I've never had, Don, you've been to, you've been to a couple of our hearings where we've had to increase taxes. I fill this courtroom up in nighttime meetings and daytime meetings with people hollering and screaming because we went up with half a cent or a quarter cent on the taxes. I've never had anybody come in there and say, raise them more. How come you're not raising my taxes?
You don't have to come in and holler, you lower them. They don't say nothing.
So, some of these people that I've seen on this Facebook, people who show, look at what they're saying, are exactly the same people that are sitting in this courtroom and screaming at us for raising taxes a half a cent.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, and didn't matter what it was for. They, we don't want you all. So, I'm telling you, it's, you know, you, you got some people that, that don't mind, and then you got a lot. But I tell you, if it went to the voters right now, it wouldn't, they wouldn't get fifty-one percent of the vote and have raised taxes. I'm telling you, it's not gonna happen.
Uh, Judge, I'm gonna tell you, I think you're being awfully generous here. That's it. I think your proposal is a little generous to me.
Well, like I said, y'all feel free to look at any of this thing. If you've got some recommendations or you wanna change something, just let me know, we'll punch it in, see how it looks. Well, again, that's, that's why it says in chapter one eleven that I'll file a proposed budget with clerk's office and I, I don't wanna file something that I know y'all are gonna be in opposition to. So that's why we have.
Do we register our position or?
Well, y'all just tell me what y'all are thinking, which might need to change. And we'll put it in there and see how it looks. But we need to look, I mean, right now, what changes do y'all have in your road and bridge budget?
I'm decreasing my, my money period.
Let me, speaking of that, by the way, come on.
Decreasing my part-time.
Here's where I do this, Don. I have nothing to do with roads or bridges.
Y'all will notice that your revenue has decreased, has decreased by the, by about half of the federal forest money. We got, uh, I got the information yesterday that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that, that the federal, that the, uh, school, rural school.
The DREES Act, SRS.
Is going away next year.
Well, it's gone now. The last thing we got from that was in April this year. We, we'll get some money from the PILT program, probably maybe about ten percent or so. Uh, we're hoping they, I mean, we're still struggling for them to reauthorize. We'll get about half of the PILT and maybe ten percent from the SS, if they put it in the budget. But as of yet, they haven't put it in the federal budget. So we, we can project that, about ten percent, and cross our fingers.
So I have, I have revised the, the revenue to reflect the fact that that's been cut from, significantly. And, um, sorry, guys, but, uh, nothing we can do about it.
I didn't wanna look at that.
You know, because, uh, so you'll see.
So where do you make that up?
Yeah. Exactly.
Can you afford to see, plant them?
Maybe we do.
You got an acre out there.
Yeah.
All the other revenue is based on, like, we've had in the past, is based on road mileage and that calculation that we had. Uh, but that one was, uh.
Pretty good hit.
It was a good hit, yes. It cut, cut it back about half for each of you guys.
And therefore I lost this money here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, rural schools act.
So, anyway, so y'all be aware of that.
So our budget went, actually went down.
Mm-hmm, your revenue went down, yes.
Your revenue went down.
How you like that, Mr. Fitz? I don't like it. But you know what? Your revenue went down. I'm gonna make do. Instead of raising people's taxes is what I'm gonna do.
I'm gonna get, I'll get out there with a shovel. I think I won't stay long.
You know, and, and Donna, if, you know, that's, that's the fallacy of county government, you know? It's like, when I came into office, councilor was a barrel of oil in two thousand and seven. What was it?
Barrel of oil. When I first started, we, we could get for that, it was around six, seven thousand dollars.
For a load?
For a, for a load. Tank, not a barrel.
Not a barrel, tank.
Okay, how much is that same tank today?
What is thirteen, what is ten?
Right at fourteen.
No, no, I said fourteen, uh.
Fourteen five?
Fourteen six something.
We got, we added for seven.
So it's double. So, you know, and that's, that's the thing is when we don't raise road and bridge, what we do is we raise, try to take care of the unfunded mandates of state puts on us and every other thing goes towards maybe a little bit, you know, some years, we don't, we're not, we're not even talking about any kind of increase for anybody this year. You know, and there's been several years since I've been office. We don't give cost of living increase or any kind of increase. And we never really had a pay raise. Uh, sheriff's office got a little increase above the cost of living here a couple of years ago. Not substantial, but that's the thing is, we don't have any more money to put back in road and bridge. They just, they stay the same and dwindle down every year. And I get screamed at every, every day in somebody's precinct because they're not, these guys aren't fixing my potholes. Yeah, talk to them. Have you talked to them? Well, I saw their foreman the other day. We're talking, you know, they're, but they're strapped. And I tell them, they're doing all they can do. You know, and especially when we have a disaster. And I was telling the day we had that thing here in court. In Greg's case, you know, the roads, and he hadn't got, he's had to fix the road, but he hadn't got his money back yet. And he's only gonna get seventy-five percent and may not get the rest of it back because it's, you know, state and female, but, and it happens in every precinct. So they're trying to do the same amount of roads with less. So each year, they, they get to do less and less maintenance on those roads and less roads getting repaired and more people screaming, hollering. So.
Yeah.
It's hard taking care of, it would be hard for us just to give all the money to precinct one road and bridge. Then nobody else get anything, you know, you know?
They get that all the time. What, every day?
But, Don. Tough.
You see how this works? We're the last one on the toll and pole. Everybody else gets before we do.
And y'all get to make the decisions.
So we get to make the decisions.
Well, it's a stack of.
But I tell you, first, and I'm, I'm not supposed to be talking, but I do have to say one thing. Y'all have done some really serious hard work on that. That proposed budget is a good budget. Y'all, y'all have done good. Really hell.
It's tough, not, you know, and, and people that sit out there at home and read which the paper comes out, think, ah! You know, these guys ain't doing anything.
Tell us that after. Y'all have done some serious work on it.
Benefiting themselves.
Serious thinking. That's good.
So what, what do y'all, what do y'all, what are y'all's thoughts?
How do I go, how do I go to my crew and explain that? I'm not.
Well, the thing is, what do we, we give?
We, we, we didn't do that. I know.
No.
But it's in this, it's in this deal.
No, not in the proposed, not in the proposed. It's in his request, but not in the proposed.
Well, we didn't do that.
Because the problem is, we have.
See what I'm saying?
You know, here's, here's the thing in law enforcement for certificates. Used to, probably back when my was starting, back when I was in there, just until I got towards the end of my time, did they start making training mandatory. Because what they were seeing was across the state, a lot of these rural sheriff departments and rural police departments couldn't afford to send their officers to training. So they just wouldn't ever go. They may be in that department for ten years and never have an hour of training. So, T close, just at that time, to start mandating twenty hours of training a year. So you had to have forty hours every two years, and then they started dictating what courses you had to take. You know, uh, ethics, you had to take, uh, racial profiling, certain sexual assault, child abuse. But they didn't, so the thing is now, you, so to get your, to get a, the next level certificate, you have to be in Officer Lasky's office so many years and have so many hours of training. So if you just hang around in law enforcement long enough and your department sends you the train, you're gonna get the certificates. You don't have to take a test for it.
Right.
You don't have to do anything special. You just go to your constis and every, so often they'll check, say, oh, you've got four hundred hours of training in ten years? Ah, boom, now you get your intermediate or your advanced or your.
We do that too every year. We get.
But the landfill guys have to keep their Class C license up. So they've gotta go to school and take tests to keep that license up. And we give them forty dollars a month or something?
Thirty something dollars.
Thirty something dollars certificate pay?
This is the problem I got with this, guys, right here. This, this benefits six people.
Oh, telephone?
Yes, and that's the top six at the department. Same thing with this right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this benefits basically the same top six people.
Well, I've talked to Nacogdoches County. Nacogdoches County deputies get six hundred dollars for an intermediate and then six hundred for an advanced and six hundred for my, so they'll top out at eighteen hundred. Where ours is eighteen hundred just for an advanced. City of Luskin, they get, I can't remember now, it's like three hundred dollars and they get like an additional forty or fifty dollars for the next one and forty, it's not like they're getting, like we give nine hundred, eighteen hundred and twenty-seven hundred. That's a pretty good hit for, for, you know, certificate pay.
Most DPS get, I wonder?
You know, I don't know.
I don't know what the county.
I bet the colonel doesn't get certificate pay.
The county will pay, and I tell you, whatever they give.
That's right. We're gonna start charging them for hitting me. I'm gonna send a bill to Abby.
Some of these top six probably need to be on the job.
But I'll tell you, I did not include, I did not include, now, that money is in that line item for utility telephone. As they say in here, it's already in there.
I'm not writing a check for that.
No. So.
But we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna give them a check.
That, uh, and I didn't put the certificate pay in there, increase. I left, I left their current just get nine hundred, eighteen hundred, twenty-seven hundred.
But we do this proposed budget as you have it right now. And I might say I don't like it, but as, as you have it right now, without raising the taxes by going to the.
Well, no, I don't think we can do that, Ken, because if we do that, my proposed budget shows a one million seventy thousand dollar increase.
Let's cut till we can, is what I say.
And that would be a two point seven cent tax increase. That's without transferring anyone. Now, if we transferred. That's without transferring, now, if we transferred half, you know, eight hundred thousand over, then we're only looking at three hundred and something, right, eighty-three hundred and something thousand dollars, so that would be a.
That's the replace.
That would be a one penny, that'd still be a penny increase.
Yeah, I was gonna say something. If you took out the replaced patrol vehicles, that's three hundred twenty-five five.
You mean on the four?
I found on vehicles.
You talking about on the four replacement?
Yeah, the proposed four replaced vehicles, not two hundred seventeen.
Well, I gave you, if you look.
I know, but are you asking for this above what we are?
He's asking, what, what is on the cap, that a hundred and seventy-five thousand? Six hundred, my proposed, is the four replacement and two new ones. Because he asked for six replacement and four new ones, which is actually ten vehicles. And what I proposed was giving him the four replacement that we're giving, that we, that we told him we would do every year.
Oh, okay, that's, that's those four.
And then two new ones, yeah, then two new ones. So including that one seventy-five under capital alley is gonna be, uh, six cars, which is four replacement, two new ones, two rifles, two, I don't know, a partridge in a pear tree.
I'm not in favor of it, I take the position, but tell me.
Yeah, but we did. Where's the end of this?
There ain't.
No.
There ain't. You put your foot in there, there ain't.
What'd you mean, favor, three deputies?
Yes, sir. If, if we, if I support anything, it'll be three deputies.
Can we do that without raising taxes?
No. Well, you can't, if you want to transfer a million, three hundred and seventy thousand, not a million four.
The auditors are not gonna like that at all, I'll tell you. You know, one, one of the things, guys, let me just tell you about this. The one, the reason we have such a, an excellent, uh, depth rate. And we have, it, it is the fact that we have a, a reasonable fund balance. And, uh, and boy, if we jeopardize that, we're in, we're in trouble for.
Here's what happens, if we, if we take the fund balance and put it in the budget.
You're gonna have to do that.
And then we have a hurricane hit, we don't have the funding to continue the operation of this county until FEMA comes in and starts reimbursing it. Because, how many million did we, eight, six million? Is about what we used when Hurricane Ike came through, to pay for the debris removal and the road, and of course we got, it took us, but we still haven't got everybody.
Got all that, it took us.
And that's been two thousand eight. So nine years, we still haven't got all our money back. So again, that's, and that's, that's why you have a fund balance for unforeseen things that happen, that we have to continue the continuity of this government uh, during those bad times. Now, I hope it never happens, you know, that, that we have a prolonged time, we've been very fortunate, even with the hurricanes we have, where we've only been down, you know, a week or so, uh, before we get all the power back and stores open and everybody gets back to, to normal and, and starts doing, going through the recovery phase. You know, once we budget that money, it's incumbent, it's there in this budget until the end of budget year.
And you're gonna have to raise taxes, don't you?
But if we do this, I mean, again, my proposed shows an increase of a million seven, and that's not counting the three hundred seventy-one thousand for the radio tower, because that's gonna be budget neutral, because we've already transferred that in, uh, from fund balance up top. And then we're showing the expenditure in, in, in Department Seventy-Five. So what you're seeing at the bottom, we've already, we've already transferred in three hundred and seventy-one thousand, so if we now, if we want to balance this without raising taxes, that means we need to add an initial million seventy thousand one sixty-five, which would come to a million, about a million four, three, thirty, million and a half dollars. And I, and I guess we could, we could allocate half of the million seventy, and then we should actually raise taxes, you know, the other half of it, which would be, you know, probably instead of two point seven cents, probably a penny and a half. But again, but then, but I agree with what I'm hearing on both ends, where does it end? Because I'm telling you, if you looked at the requests here, gentlemen, and you're, I guess Eddie gave you everything. You already got an idea of what he's gonna ask for next year, he's already putting in there for more dispatchers, more jailers, uh, not jail, more, I mean, dispatch, more jailers, and wants to continue this and increase this and increase that, and it's all in there, but, and I don't really want to hear about that, I'm not concerned about two thousand nineteen, I'm worried about two thousand eighteen, how we fund that. We're worried about two thousand nineteen, when that time comes, and I can't look at it and tell him, yeah, two thousand nineteen was good, because who knows? You know, we may have, General Ector may come back and put a jet engine.
How many, how many deputies we got on ship right now?
Well, I've been, I've been dealing with that all afternoon, by the fact. And it's very confusing, because I'll tell you this, we're showing twenty-five deputies in the sheriff's office.
Yeah, one and a half. I got twenty-three here, don't worry.
Well, that's on that sheet, but you, there's three, he's got three deputies at the sheriff's office that are transport deputies, which should be at the jails, because we don't transport from the sheriff, we transport from the jail.
Right.
So he's got, we've got twenty-five deputies counting the Burke Grant position, Charlotte. Then we've got a mental health transport, an animal control, who is not a deputy, by the way, who is a civilian. But she's taking a deputy's position. Then we have the Zavala deputy, who, what I understand, kind of works when he wants to.
And he does a lot of good work.
And he does, yeah, and he's down there in that south end of the county, but it's still, I don't know, I don't know when he worked. Then they've got a civil deputy, a warrant deputy, a sex offender deputy, a deputy assigned to CID, an environmental who does the garbage, you know, goes around to search for dust sites, and then the mowing deputy goes around and mows this stuff. And then they've got three deputies that, who are assigned to transport, which they should be taking positions from the jails, not from the sheriff's office. So that leaves us with.
Did you mention the courthouse deputies?
No, those are, those are separate, those are separate, yeah. Basically, he's got, it's hard to say, twelve, twelve to fifteen deputies on patrol.
And a secretary.
But he's got, he's, he's got three, what he's claiming is, what he's got right now is he's got three deputies, lieutenant and sergeant on two shifts.
And five people.
Then he's got four deputies, lieutenant sergeant on two, uh, two shifts, there's four shifts. And so, and they work twelve hours shifts, like six AM, six PM, six PM, six AM. So on two shifts, there's five, two shifts, there's six. And what he's, what he's proposing is to put, get these deputies, he's asking for, and put one more on each shift, which would make six on a shift, or seven on a shift. And he's got, and, and giving him that other CID would give him ten detectives.
Ten detectives.
Give him eight CID, a sergeant lieutenant CID, ten people. I don't know why we need ten detectives. Well, you could take four or five of those detectives, or even four, and put them on a three PM to three AM shift, and they'd be working the last four hours, or three hours of the night shift, and the day shift, and first three hours of the night shift.
During the busy.
And you'd have double your officers out there during busy time of shift. Instead of putting one more out there on shift, which is really not gonna, I mean, and I was a police chief, and, and I thought about this a lot of times when I was going to my city councils, and thinking, surely they're not gonna believe me, and, and I believe what I'm saying if I open my mouth and make that statement. But when you look around law enforcement, and you look at any police agency or any sheriff's agent department, and you say, well, we can't, we, you know, look at the, look at the sheriff's department, look at this police department, they've got twice as many officers on shift as I do. Or the police department say, look at the sheriff's office, they've got twice as many deputies on the street as I do on each shift. Well, if the police department has twice the amount of officers on the shift, and their crime rate is twice as bad, tell me how the increase in those numbers is solving crime or reducing crime. It, it doesn't, it doesn't work, I mean, you can't, you can't just say, give me more people, more money, and I'm, that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna reduce the crime here. If I can figure out how to reduce the crime, we all could be living in the Bahamas right now, maybe making a bunch of money. So, the fact of the matter, do we need a reasonable amount of officers on the street in every department? Sure we do. Do we need some more to answer the county, or aren't we? Probably do, but I can't, I can't stand up and testify, because I don't know that what we have now is not being used in the most efficient manner we can use it. I mean, if you're, if, if I, as a police chief, when I was having a problem with burglars at night, guess what? My investigator didn't work daytime.
He, he came out and worked at night and patrolled around, you know?
I came out at night and worked and patrolled around, you know, you do what you gotta do to cover the shifts and problem areas that need to be covered. You know, if I've got ten investigators, and I'm having a bunch of burglaries, well, they're not gonna be sitting in the office, they're gonna be out in those unmarked cars in those areas where they're getting burglarized and trying to catch some people. And I tell you, I heard from a lady who got burglarized, and the deputy told her pretty much verbatim, where she said, I know who got my, my equipment, followed this little trail behind my house, and it comes out over there behind the woods, this bunch of crooks over there, and I think that's where my cameras and stuff are. And his words to her was, well, you know, we're so shorthanded, if I, if we had more people on the street, I could, I could have to afford the time to go look back down there and follow that trail.
Should've had some butt fire, right?
Why didn't he call, the officer say, send me an investigator out here to go, go track this stuff down? Or why are we taking burglary calls by telephone reports, you know? I just don't think that we're, we're, we're being as effective and efficient, we can't, because it's easier just to tell the public, woe is me, and, and we need more money, more people. And fact of the matter is, I don't deny that, but y'all are a prime example of those, Amy, everybody here needs more money, more people.
I need three hundred fifty-five, three hundred fifty thousand, is what I need.
I, just for the record, I personally think it's a management issue over there at the jail, or the sheriff's department.
He needs, what, fifty thousand dollars to replace an air conditioner? At the jail?
No, they're, they're, they're wanting to budget fifty to replace air conditioners.
As they go out, they're, they're.
Yeah, if they go out, again.
If they don't.
But again, and we've been, and I'm with you, I voted with y'all, I said aye too. When they've come in and wanted to move money from one line to another to buy something that, oh, look, this is something we found we can use. And we said, instead of saying, well, budget it next year, you know, we said, okay, let them transfer the money. And so the thing is, if we give them fifty thousand dollars in there to replace air conditioners at the jail, we need to make sure they don't transfer forty thousand dollars that to buy something else that they decide they want. If they don't buy the air conditioners, well, it comes back next year to general fund, and we'll budget to give in case the air conditioners go out. But you can't keep trying to find fifty thousand dollars every year, you know, it's like saying, my wife's saying, I wanna buy a car, I need thirty thousand dollars. I said, okay, dang man, here's the last thirty thousand, and she goes out and gets a bunch of manicures or whatever, I don't know what they cost. And then next year she says, well, I need thirty thousand to buy a new car, well, I don't have thirty thousand dollars every, you know, so. You know, get to your story, a million seventy thousand one sixty-five is the proposed shortfall. A million six eighteen four seventy is the requested shortfall. If we put in the same amount, transfer from fund balance that we transferred last year to eight twenty-eight, we would need seven hundred and ninety thousand, and that would amount to about a two, two and a half cent tax increase, and if we put the same amount, the eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand from fund balance in there, we would need two hundred and forty-two thousand, which would be about three quarters of a cent increase. So, y'all, I'm at y'all's mercy, I'm, I've, I've, Eddie has beat me mercilessly out here with these numbers. So I'm looking for, you know, y'all just tell me what direction that y'all want to go with this, and, and, I mean, I, I, I tried to be, really, I tried to be generous and not just say, no, you know, which, I mean, based on every person I've talked to in Angela in the county, I mean, that I, and I'm taking, I haven't, I haven't gone out and approached people and said, what do you think? I've had people call me and say, you need to come here, we want to talk to you, so I've gone. And I've, again, had yet to have the first person be in favor of raising taxes for anything.
One hundred percent of the people that call me about this, one hundred percent do not raise my taxes. I've bumped into a few people along the road, they said, well, if it's ten dollars or whatever, that's okay. But the people that made a point to call me or approach me about this was one hundred percent against taxes, and I pretty much am too, in case you ain't figured that out.
If we can do these things budget neutral, I mean, if there's a way where, again, if he's, if, if there's three hundred thousand dollars in there that, that he would turn back, so with his proposed, I'm just, with the proposed budget being three, four, three, if we could put that in and transfer the money in to balance that, and didn't have to use that money because the money that he had in his budget covered that cost, so it would be, you know, revenue and expenditure neutral, I, yeah, I'd be a hundred percent, I'd be right off the bat, say yes. But I still have, I mean, I'm still, I put it in there, but again, that's because I didn't want to be the one just to say, no, 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 not knowing exactly where y'all stood. I want to give y'all a chance to have input.
I don't know, I don't know how hard this is, but if you go all the way, if, if everything you've proposed, all the way down to the sheriff's department, okay, at that point, we're comfortable and, and don't have to raise taxes, and don't even really have to pull a light out of fund balance, am I correct?
No. No, there's.
That, it's, it's gonna be still up, we're, if, if we, if we, if we fund my proposed budget.
I'm talking about excluding what you propose for the sheriff.
Oh, at taking the three hundred forty-three thousand, that, we're still seven hundred thousand dollars short.
So that's still gonna cause us a.
Well, I'd say we are, I mean, but that's the thing is, like, here's, here's, here's the thing, we were the same, last year we were doing that, we were eight hundred thousand short. That's why we transferred the eight hundred twenty-eight thousand in. Now, we're, we're, we're hoping not, but we're thinking we may have to dip in a little bit of that this year, and we may not. But of all the years, this looks like we may have to, it's, you said, well, we've never had to use any of it before, we put it in there to balance it, uh, just like the state kinda does, when they say, oh, well, we're gonna have, we're gonna put this much money from, because we know we're gonna generate this much revenue in the next two years, so we're gonna use y'all's nine-one-one money to balance the budget, but we're not even gonna use your nine-one-one money, we're gonna use it to bal- balance the budget. And we've used our fund balance to, to balance the budget, and we've never had to dip into it because either sales tax was up a little bit, and what the department's returned at the end of the year and didn't expend was a wash, I'm gonna say that. So if this year we budget eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, if we, if we get a, if sales tax goes up a little bit, you know, if it doesn't have a dip in it, we may not have to, we may have to use eight thousand, we may have to go twenty-eight thousand, I don't know. But we never had to before. But to make, fit all that to say this, if we take out the sheriff's department, is what you're saying, that three hundred forty-three thousand.
What I wanted to do was look at where we was at without sheriff's department, and then see what we could give you.
Would be seven hundred, take, take three hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and six dollars from a million seventy one sixty-five, and that's. Where's your little calculator? What I'm gonna do with you. Little calculator, so you take a million oh seven oh one six five point minus three forty-three, three oh six, I believe, is that right? So we're seven hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars short. So that's what we would have to transfer from fund balance to balance the budget.
And that's giving you net.
That's, that's without putting anything in for the sheriff's office, that's putting the jail in there, but no sheriff's office. So that's what I'm saying, we're about where we were last year.
Well, some of that stuff we have to have there, cop sync payments, the, the, some of those things, as we talked about, the, the replacement vehicles have to be in, it doesn't have to be in there, but we've agreed to that in the past, so what I've just.
We had taken that and that in, I was just going to.
Right, uh, if, if you take out the.
Everything, the cars, the cop sync.
Yeah, and, and the additional two cars and the additional equipment, it's three hundred and fourteen thousand four sixty-nine.
So we have to be seven hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Additional, yeah.
So, uh, so yes.
And we're not.
Three hundred and what, fourteen?
Three hundred and fourteen.
So you take thirty-six, and now we're about six ninety-six, is what we'd have to transfer in from. So, you take thirty-six, and now we're about six ninety-six is what we'd have to transfer in from seven hundred thousand to the seven twenty-six.
But, but the cars are, the cars are not already in his budget from the last year too?
Yes, yes.
The cars is in there.
Yeah, the cars are, cars are in there.
Well, no, we put, yeah, we don't have a line item just for cars, replacement cars just in capital. We just budgeted, we, we don't put, we don't have a separate line item for replacement cars. We're just putting a capital out of existence.
Okay, but did, last year it was in there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, we left it like it is, he'd still be disappointed, cars, correct?
No, it is in capital out later too, but if we leave it in capital out, it will be there.
Yeah, and, and, and what I just gave you was with, with those in there. Only taking out the extra things.
The new cars.
At that point, are we comfortable?
Two new rifles, the two, the two new.
Without raising taxes, are we comfortable doing that scenario?
Comfortable.
Is the auditor comfortable?
Let me ask you this. What's happening next year though?
Well, he's gonna come back with the same thing if he don't get the future.
I'm just saying, where's the end of this?
There's never any.
I mean, you're gonna continually, until.
Well, I'll tell you, here's what's gonna happen, because I know law enforcement guys. I, I, I are a woman. If we give him the personnel this year and the equipment this year, next year it salaries.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, next year it's, it's nine hundred thousand dollars salary. We need to get everybody up to where Harris County's making, you know? I mean, it, it doesn't end, and then you come back to next year and now we're behind again in personnel. We need more personnel. That's, that's what I'm saying, you cannot put enough money in law enforcement.
That's the reason, that's the reason I'm trying to get it, what we've got, what we gotta give him out of this.
Well, if you take two cars, two rifles, two cop sync computers, that stuff out of this equipment list, then what you have left over is the cop sync fifty-one thousand dollars for the cops. We have to put.
Then we have to do.
The four replacement cars, uh, I don't have a list for me, here you go. Four replacement cars.
That's it.
That's it, yeah, so we give you.
Air conditioner for ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, ten thousand dollars for replacing an air conditioner, you know, to replace one that's getting old. The annual payment to cop sync, fifty-one thousand. The four vehicles, which is two hundred twenty-eight thousand. So, now you're at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand plus ten, two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. We've covered the four replacement vehicles, the computer and the annual payment to cops.
Which is stuff we pretty much gathered there.
Yeah.
That's what I propose.
Roughly, that would, that would need seven hundred and fifty-five thousand roughly from fund balance. We're already taking two seven, two.
Three seventy-one.
Three seventy-one, so that would get it up to close to a million dollars now.
But we can live with the three seventy-one.
We can live with, the three seventy-one, we know, we, we anticipate spending that.
And we know it's gonna take us a couple of years to get it back, bring it back. But we can, we're comfortable with spending that, because it's a one-time deal.
The seven fifty-five, just like last year, we used eight twenty, uh, eight twenty-eight, which we're not, we trust we're not gonna need much of that at all. So, that may be the same scenario.
We use the seven fifty, I mean, although we'll be putting a million in, so three hundred seventy-one of that, we know is gone. So, of the seven hundred extra thousand or whatever it is, say, you don't like round numbers, of the other seven hundred thousand, will we need any of that at the end of the year? Or will, as we've done in the past, we've been able to not use that because of the revenue, some of the revenues have increased and some of the expenditures have not happened. That make sense?
Always in our budget preparation, we try to underestimate revenues and overestimate expenditures. And, and in the past, we've been able, it's proved that we've done that. So, I would not frankly anticipate needing the seven hundred and fifty-five thousand that it would take to do, to do this.
But the fact of the matter is, is we've done that in lieu of raising taxes. Because we knew, I mean, if we raised taxes, we're actually not gonna need that much at the end of the year because we got the revenue, you know, sales tax and, and the reduction in expenditures came back and covered that deficit.
I need three hundred fifty thousand for my machine, we'll take that one time out of fund balance.
You don't have any in your fund balance.
Now, you double that.
I have your fund balance.
You will stand the law. You're like the airport in landfill, you will stand the law. You're an enterprise department.
I will tell you, I've done pretty good with what I've got.
Yeah, and that's, it, it, it's operational for y'all, it always has been and it will be until, but again, I mean, here's the thing. And I'll have to, I'll stand here and I have not had a chance, I, I, I'm not making, I'm not, you know, the statute tells me what I have to do as a budget officer of this county. And I'm gonna do that, and I'll, I'll do it openly, I'll let Don come in, I'll talk to Don, I'll let anybody in here and come in here if they've got a question during the public hearing, I'll let them ask, and I'll answer them truthfully and I'll show it to them. I won't just talk them and, you know, give them the spiel, I'll show them facts. But when you got somebody from your local TV station stands up and says that we're the biggest county and we got one of the lowest tax rate, we should have the biggest tax rate, that's what people don't understand. Tax rates aren't based on population. No, there's, population has nothing to do with it. And to sit there and say that the sheriff's department has not had an increase in their budget in twenty-one years when they've had nearly a million dollar increase in the last five years is somebody that should be doing some fact finding before they do. Yeah, they should be doing some fact finding before they, they're doing some face letting, you know? So, again, it, it, it is what it is and, and, again, I admire y'all for not.
Let, let me make my case for what I'm asking for.
Trying to get you out of here. But I'll tell you what it ought to be.
This machine, precinct one has one, tell you.
Y'all need to learn to share it a little better, old hands.
Well, this is the, this is the issue, Judge, and, and we've all talked about it, is when I need it, he needs it. You know, I'm renting a three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollar machine right now for thirty days for fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, I'm wondering maybe a unit road system would help alleviate some of this because then that road superintendent would know when that needed to be used in what precinct.
You're, you're absolutely right, but the voters won't support it.
Voters don't have to.
Well, I agree with that.
Y'all can put it in, if it doesn't work, take it out. If the voters put it in, you can't take it out.
Can't take it out. I agree.
You know, and, and again, I, I.
But it will save us on material costs and, in a long run. I am spending a hundred percent of my budget in material residually on the same projects over and over and over and over again. And I can reduce that material cost and in return reduce labor cost with the purchase of, of a machine like this to, to cut down on constant. Basically, you're digging, you know, day in, day out. If you're taking dirt out of a hole and you're putting material back in, you know, you're living in one place, it doesn't seem that bad.
Did you put me on so stingy?
Just, just for the record, in January, the unit road system kinda got took off. He's had my machines, I've moved his equipment, I've got his roller down at my place now.
That's what it's all about.
I'm making all sand for everyone.
I tell you, that's, that's getting along.
Have you baked my own sand?
I'm making all sand for.
Share the sandbox.
Working together.
Share the sandbox, that's what it's all about.
It is.
Share the shovel.
But I, I'll share this machine with you, can I?
Well, I got one next door to him, I can get when I get ready. I, I tell you that for sure.
I, I borrowed his machine, I used it last year and it works well, okay? But that's because he was out of money and couldn't use himself.
Well, he gonna run out this year and I can get it when I get ready.
Well, the thing is though, he, he broke down on me and I had spent two thousand dollars fixing it.
Giving up.
What we gonna do, fellas, what we gonna do? We gonna go?
What's y'all's recommendation?
I do not want to raise taxes.
I don't either, I think I made that for clear.
I mean, we're not, we can't take a vote here, because not agenda. But I wanna know your consensus of what y'all, what y'all wanna do. And what you want, but tell me what you'd like for me to do.
Take what you can out of fund balance.
Because I'm gonna file, I'm gonna file a proposal budget Monday. Uh, it's tomorrow's Friday, so, uh, by close of business day Monday, because if we don't, then we can't adopt the budget until September and I don't know that we can anyway, but I wanna have that opportunity. Because if we increase taxes, if we exceed the lower effective rate of rollback rate, then we've got to have two public hearings in addition to the public hearing in which we adopt the budget. And I have to give a seven-day notice, I have to have two hearings, at least three days apart. So, now we're moving down the calendar and so that moves us into September. Uh, and we have to have by law the budget adopted by September twentieth because we got our certified appraisal rolls on July twentieth and we have to do either by September thirtieth or sixty days after we receive the certified numbers. So, we've gotta have a budget adopted. If we don't have a budget adopted by September twentieth, then we revert back to this year's budget.
What can you do to keep from raising, what, what can we do?
The only thing you can do is hold services and.
No, 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 I'm talking about to keep from raising taxes this year.
Well, here's what I'm, here's what I'm hearing, based on my vision of pit here, I think, is eliminate all of the sheriff's additional items that's not already.
Managed, yeah, committed.
And then take the balance, which is gonna be roughly seven hundred and fifty-five thousand out of fund balance and leave the effective, leave the effective tax rate what it is. I think, I gotta put all the numbers together to make sure.
So, in other words, we're not gonna do anything except the sheriff's office have given them their four replacement cars and their cop sync annual fee. And everybody else is saying, the only thing we're giving is, is the, the eight dollars a month, ninety-six dollars a year cost to live, I mean, the, the longevity pay. Now, we do have in there the six thousand dollars for the election office, for that contract temporary person.
And the jail doors and all.
Yeah, jail doors and that.
All the stuff.
And then money to fix the drive-through windows and stuff at the, but nobody else, I mean, there's no other increases except IT, but that's, that's for the operation of the whole county.
Well, now, you're, you're, uh, uh, you're just, you're just swapping money there.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, 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 nothing's increased, it's temporary condition to go. Or we can put it back and be the same.
Yeah, that's the reason I was asking.
But we need it like it is for the grant.
Yes, other thing.
To get the grant monies.
And, and, and make sure that everybody know that Roland Bridge is taking a hit.
Except precinct four. Except precinct four.
Y'all taking a hit too, aren't you? Y'all taking a hit?
No, I want that three hundred fifty thousand. Out of your fund balance. And this will be a one-time and it will fix, it will fix precinct four for ten to twelve to fifteen.
Well, I'll tell you this, I, I'll tell you, then we can, we can do communication system.
No.
Or we can do precinct four.
Precinct four.
That's new communication.
The communications is an if anyway. It's an if, because they gotta get grant money to get it anyway.
No, this is without grant money.
This is totally, this covered.
Is that gonna replace the existing radio tire?
Yep, it's gonna put one in the wireless, gonna replace one in here and, and one in Dabon.
Tell me that again, it is gonna replace the one on O U?
Yes.
Yeah, there's gonna be three tires, three tires.
If it doesn't do away with it at all, I mean, there, there won't be a tire there.
That's what I'm hoping, I can move over there.
Now, we're gonna have, what we're gonna do, we're gonna have two, two new tires and the one in Dabon's gonna have to be moved. And we're putting the infrastructure in at all those locations.
Have you talked to the city manager down there?
Yeah, where, where?
Dabon.
Oh, no, that, they're, they don't have a choice. They're already.
Well, the state's gonna.
Texas already paid them to move it, yeah, Texas already paid them to move it.
But he's made some comments that he might need to get his clarification on, so.
Well, okay, yeah, I assume that's already been taken care of. We'll, I'll make sure that is.
Yes, yes, I just.
But that's, the city's gonna share half of this cost with us and, and then if there's some money that comes in to offset that, then we'll split that money and go back to the county to recoup some of that expenditure, but that's, that's, that's do the whole system. Now, we'll have to look at phase two and three down the road for when we start replacing some radios and that kinda stuff, you know, quarter moles and handhelds and mobile units and stuff. But everything we have now, we'll work on that system. That's getting the towers up, it's replaced.
You should have better reception, shouldn't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the whole, whole thing, if we, you know, we're operating on a water tire down there, etc., into the canyon, sometimes.
So, I don't have any support for three hundred fifty thousand?
You will, I can, I can get it. I spent it.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I know.
What'd you say there?
I don't have any support for it.
Oh, no, everybody, I think everybody wants a radio tire.
Yeah, just asking.
Now, if Greg could get three hundred fifty thousand, he probably wouldn't want radio tires either, but I don't think, y'all might have to figure that out.
Greg got that much old ham, and when he get it, he can loan it to you.
No, he doesn't.
He don't have that much old.
No, no.
So.
I, I don't know if y'all know, my predecessor brought an asphalt zipper. And it just, it don't work.
You got rid of that thing.
And you ever tried to plug it in? We're working, we're working on it. I tried to put it on the agenda, I don't.
The candies I've heard from just love it, I don't know.
I like the zipper.
Maybe they're all embarrassed for the, because they bought it and now they have to say it.
In fact, he, predecessor admitted that it did not work the other day, so.
They spent a lot of money on it.
He spent a hundred seventy thousand on it, wasted it.
So, okay, am I, am I hearing right? Because I've gotta get this changed and filed and we're not gonna meet again before Monday. So, am I hearing that y'all want to adopt the effective rate, take everything out of the sheriff's department request except for the four cars and the cop sync program and transfer the seven hundred fifty thousand from fund balance to balance the budget and not have a tax increase at all?
That was my request, I didn't hear none of the other guys.
Well, I would like to, but I would like. Is there not any deputy increase? No, no added deputies?
No added personnel.
I'd like to see at least one. At least one.
Well, we can't.
Can be on the day shift or night shift? I don't care where it puts you, but just, that's, that's his problem.
Well, we got twenty-three officers, right?
I'm, I'm just telling you from a law enforcement standpoint, where I was on the street, don't get, if I had a choice, give me help, don't give me more money, give me help. And, and I, I can't argue the management problem.
Well, that's, that's my thing, I think he's got the help there to give him, he just, he just ain't doing it. And if you, if you keep giving, he just gonna keep moving them up there.
Well, again, I think we got a professional standards officer that could be doing something besides professional standards. You know, you've got civil or warrant officers, sergeant, I mean, there's, there's.
Got two shifts, five lieutenants, seven sergeants, six, well, you know, you do the detective, but, and then twenty-three deputies. You got two shifts, is that not right?
Four shifts.
Four shifts. How do you get four shifts, are they?
He's got three, he's got, he's claiming he has three deputy lay shift plus a sergeant lieutenant. But you got, you got, you've got five lieutenants, you got four lieutenants on patrol and one CID.
So, all these are people that's been talking, it's three, well, he told me he only got the three per shift.
Well, that's what he's saying, he's only, but they don't understand, they think he's only got three bodies out there.
Yeah, well, the last, the last time I discussed something with him.
Yeah, well, he's got someone on vacation, maybe he does, but if he have a lot, well, again, that's the whole purpose of maybe making this power shift out there and taking some of these CID guys or some of these other guys, uh, that he's got doing other jobs and, and put four of them out there on a power shift so that when you have one on vacation on a normal shift, you, you still got those other four out there. You know, instead of having five, you've got the five, the three deputies and lieutenant sergeant now, and you put a power shift, now you got four of the deputy, now you got nine people out there. But if you take two on vacation, you still got seven.
In the office to do paperwork. I was told that he has to have the boss, which is lieutenant, I guess, in the office.
Oh, he wants it, from what I heard, if he wants them sitting at this. And they're saying, they're saying.
The sergeant, yeah.
I can't, we can't do that in Angeline County, this is in Harris County. You know, I mean, in the county where you have forty deputies on a shift, the lieutenant may sit in there and, and supervise from a, from a desk. But in rural Texas, you gotta do it all. You gotta be the lieutenant, and guess what? When your, when your sergeant and your three deputies are on the call as lieutenant, you may have to take a caller tonight then. You can't say, "Oh, lieutenants don't take calls, sergeants do."
I take calls at eleven o'clock and I go cut trees. I'll go bring some pot over, whatever.
I mean, again, it's, if you do what you have to do and you, and you're all, you're always evaluating what you're doing, you know? And I, I don't know, I, I look at this shift right here, it tells you who's in these positions and what the positions are, and you know, you've got, it's just like the jail, we've got. positions are, and you know, you've got, it's just like the jail, we've got, there's thirty-three jailers, okay, plus four lieutenants, that's thirty-seven, plus three corporals, that's forty, plus five sergeants, that's forty-five, plus a food service manager, that's forty-six, plus a business HR manager, that's forty-seven, plus three part-timers. So, he has to take three deputy positions and make them transport out of the sheriff's office? Why aren't they out of the jail? That would give you three more deputies over here in the sheriff's office. They should be in the jail anywhere, that's where they're transported from. I mean, that's what you need transported, is inmates in the jail. You don't transport other deputies. It's just planning, I don't know. But again, I don't run it. I, I, you know, and that's not my job, and I can't start doing everybody, you know, his job and...
And file the sales.
I do Eddie's job enough.
He's always got the room.
Well, she's just convenient.
She takes it pretty easy.
I could say I do Eddie's job, but everybody knows that through anyway.
Yeah, right. That's impossible.
Yeah, yeah.
Eddie, you gonna bring him back there and do it all?
Okay, so I need to, I know we beat this round, and so I need a final, yeah, I think that's mine, what I'd like to see. So do we have that?
Always gonna raise taxes.
No. Well, depends on what you want. If you want more personnel, we're raising taxes.
Eddie, that's a fifth way.
If we, if we add personnel, we're raising taxes. There's no way around that. I mean, we're, we're stretching what we got now by just maintaining what we have and what we're permitted to. If you wanna, I mean, and so that's, again, that's why I proposed this, this, you know, was, I mean, most of the time, you know, budget is not rocket science. In most years, when, you know, your revenues are pretty flat, so have been over the last eight, nine, seven, eight, nine years, you know what you got coming in, and so there's not a whole lot of, you might move a little here and a little there, but you kinda stand neutral. So there's not a lot, but when you have a bunch of requests and you're trying to modify those requests, it, it doesn't happen in, in sitting here in thirty, forty, fifty minutes an hour and get that done. Because really, you really, I mean, you do, I do more soul searching in here on this budget than I do put these numbers in these lines.
I just feel like with the funds that we have available, that, and I, and I'm gonna tell y'all something. I, I do not wanna raise taxes for anything, but sooner or later, we're gonna have two guys, I mean, sooner or later. But not for...
I'm hoping that this community will, I mean, will be beneficial, beneficiary of some industry that's in this job.
If you keep taxes down, that's a pain to do.
Right.
And, and if you start...
That's the hardest one, not a bigger staff, so you don't want to tax us.
Exactly. If you start, you start raising taxes, guess what? All that industry looks for counties over here that have low tax revenue. And I tell you what, there's other twelve counties out there that are looking at us right now, except for some big counties a little below us. Nakadosa County in two thousand fourteen was half a penny below us, now it's fifteen cents above us. They would love to be where we were, but they're men, and they haven't added any personnel. Matter of fact, they cut sixteen jailers during this time. They've only given one back. So, their, their problem is their values have gone down so bad, they've had to risk taxes just to maintain the same service. Where we've been able to pick up some of this through, you know, some of these other jobs in retail and, and hotels and, you know, service industry, uh, but it's not the quality job, it's not forty, fifty dollar an hour job, so those people can't afford to, you know, some of those that were making thirty, forty dollars an hour, fifty dollars an hour, you know, at left in industry and the foundry and the machine shop.
I was in two thousand fourteen.
And I would say, Bobby, listen, seriously, in all sincerity, if we had the money...
We got the money.
I would, I would go with that, but I...
We got the money. And that's, that's...
Where?
Where?
Where? Well, no, you can't use fund balance for, for personnel?
Uh, no, 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 no. I ain't talking about personnel, I'm talking about my machines.
Well, I thought that was settled. I thought that one had already died for lack of a second. Well, here, here, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, I understand that I did it myself, I really did.
Well, but you were here in two thousand four, five, and six when we were...
True. We're in better places.
Having two million dollars in the hole.
Same right now than we've ever been.
If we hadn't had the landfill back then, we'd have shut County Winter down.
Sure.
Because we were broke.
And guess what happened to us? When we started taking money from the landfill, the city wanted to negotiate their contract 'cause we were paying the, they were paying the landfill too much money.
Well, I'd love to renegotiate that contract.
They sure did.
No doubt.
And then one year, we just put it out, everybody took a viable percent cut, every department.
Yep.
Remember that, Eddie?
Yeah.
And every department has to take back some of their money.
You know, and that's, it's taken, it's taken us, it's two thousand seventeen, fifteen years to build our fund balance back where it's manageable now, to where if something happens, we can...
What do we write that fund balance to me?
Nine, a little under ten, yeah. Yeah. But with a twenty-five million dollar budget, it's about six, it's about a little less than six months of operation.
Yep.
You know, and, and again, if you have, that's just if the market crashes and the taxes are coming in. If we have a disaster and we spend four million of that and, and then we have to operate for a couple of months, we're broke. They recommend three to six months.
Here's what I'm hearing. I'm, I'm, guys...
We can beat this to death for how long?
Well, I wanna, I gotta have a consensus as to how to put these numbers together. What, what I've heard is, uh, not give the sheriff any of his additional increases. That's one proposal. And then that would mean leave the, leave the effective tax rate alone, take the balance, which is roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand, out of fund balance.
Balance or to balance the budget?
To balance the budget. Then, there was a suggestion to do exactly that, but add one deputy. And that would add...
Tax rate increase.
Increase the tax rate to do that. And then, the other, the third proposal was to transfer three hundred and somebody thousand to Roden Bridge four.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand. What do y'all wanna do, guys? Which one of those three do you wanna do? So I can put it in this budget.
We wanna transfer three hundred fifty thousand.
Well, I say, oh, I say, I say. Five more say, we or me wanna transfer three hundred fifty-five thousand? That's up to y'all. Y'all are the Roden Bridge guys. It takes three of y'all to say transfer.
That will fix precinct four. I, I, I tell you guys, it will fix precinct four.
We need to go ahead and balance the budget.
We gotta balance the budget.
It's gotta be balanced.
Well, I need a million dollars, man.
Okay, get us this saying, the first proposal. Take out all of the sheriff's extra, not add any, any additional personnel and not transfer money to Roden Bridge four. Is that right?
That's what I'm saying.
And that was mine, so there's two.
There's two, okay.
No additional increases. We go, we gotta pay for the comp sync, right, guys?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're gonna leave the four replacement cars and the cop sync in there. We're just not putting any additional new cars or personnel in there with their thing.
And then pay for one air conditioner, ten grand, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is that, what's that ten grand air conditioner?
Well, that's just, that's about the cost to replace an air conditioner.
Is that, okay?
They should put that in there every year.
Is that separate from the fifty that we're giving him as well?
No, that's for the jail.
One for the jail, one for the sheriff. Two different bills, those guys.
Two bills, two different bills. They're, they're looking at replacing multiple units, possibly at the jail.
All right.
And you got to, you got inmates in there, you know.
All right, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing is two votes, I don't know if we're voting.
No, no.
But two suggestions for number one.
Two people will, what I'm hearing is two people say, here's what I wanna see in the budget.
That's right, okay.
That's what I wanna see.
Well, there's three.
Three.
Okay, so you're saying, give them their four replacement cars, give them their cop sync, the air conditioner, and don't give precinct four their three hundred fifty-five for their machine?
I mean, we can't afford that.
Okay, well, that's what you're saying then.
Sorry, but I mean, just saying, we can't afford that.
That's three. Don't you just hate three, number three?
But you get no, no additional increases, the comp sync we gotta do, AC we gotta do, and four replacement cars we have.
And what that will do, that will mean we will balance this budget with no tax increase, we will adopt the effective tax rate.
We won't have to have olives in there?
We will not, and again, but you gotta understand, like, unlike some other counties, we will not be cutting services, we will not be cutting personnel, we will not be cutting back on salaries.
Right.
You know, we're, we're gonna continue to maintain that service.
You do know where that money will come from, Greg, if I was to get it?
Precinct one.
No. Of where I'm asking for it from, not...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But I do know too, if something happened to this county...
I agree.
We would, we would be sunk if we just kept dipping.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I'll tell y'all this, and here's something y'all might wanna consider. I doubt very seriously in talking with people that I can put an elevator at the dent building, but it's just not, there's just no, I just don't think there's any way we can do that.
Who's gonna ask you about that?
Uh, so, that's a hundred and thousand dollars that y'all can use if you so choose, if you wanna leave it in there, and I'll continue trying to find a way to make that happen if we ever can.
I don't believe in elevator.
I, again, just in talk with the elevator companies, I mean, it's, I just don't see any way we can make it work.
There's a way to do it anyway.
And, and that's the problem, if we do that, then we've got to, the whole building has to be adapted to ADA rules and regulations. That means all the bathrooms have to be redone to come out, I just don't see it to be able to afford that. Um, so there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that y'all, if y'all so choose, can use for equipment, and it has to be, it can't be used for anything else. We can't put it for the personnel or anything, it has to be used for...
Look, it can only be used for what the...
The tax, the tax, the tax note was, and that was for elevator equipment.
Feasibility study.
That's gonna be done, I'm close to going now. We need to do this, we'll know more for what we need. But that's, I mean, that's, that's there, and that's up, if y'all so choose, move that to somewhere for equipment, they can do it, but we can't use it for anything else.
Nobody won't touch it, right.
But I, I'll, I, I just wanna make sure that when we bring this budget to the public, that this is the budget that this governing body is comfortable with presenting, uh, and, you know, because I tell you what, I had a commissioner one year, he's no longer here, so I'm, that's several of them, so I won't tell you who it was, but, in these budget workshops, was adamant about us increasing the tax rate a penny. And he got the other three commissioners to agree to that, and they divided that penny between all four precincts based on their percentage now. Some of them got three hundred thousand, some of them got sixty thousand. And then when it came to vote for that budget that day, that penny tax increase...
He voted against it.
He was the only commissioner that voted against it. And I thought...
He made the proposal.
You're the one that wanted it. The increase. I, I just, I just, and I, you know, of course, I just moved on, I didn't say, but it like floored me.
Surely one big brother.
No, no, no. But it, it floored me that they, you know, were adamant about increasing it a penny so they can get, because they, Roden Bridge had never had any increase and needed by high, behind, behind, behind. And then when it took a vote, everybody voted aye, and he voted nay. Okay, anyway.
Well, if I'm gonna vote now, I'm gonna tell you before.
Well, we need, I need to know that now, if y'all are comfortable, I mean, if you're...
I ain't getting nothing, I won't.
Well, I know, well, and, but we're not, I mean, again, there's no personnel increases, and that's, hey, I can, you know, I'll stand, I mean, I'm here, and, and again, I'll be the first to admit, does the sheriff's office probably need more? Yes. Does the county clerk's office probably need more? Yes. Roden Bridge need more? Yes. Everybody need more? Probably so.
This probably ain't the time to do it, and you don't have to elaborate on it, but, uh, I got an email about a, uh, GLO government, uh, general land office grant, million dollar grant for roads, is that...
For roads?
Yes, sir.
I hadn't heard that.
Well, maybe we might.
I'll ask Ray about that, if you don't mind.
Uh, actually, Pat Oops is the one that sent the email to me.
Did he?
And said that, uh, the restoration was real recent, or the...
Well, the, the application process. Well, see, now, that may be what we went out for engineer, you know, I advertised for engineers qualifications here a couple of months back, and, and we did that because Ray recommended go ahead and do that, because there may be some grants coming up, but he wasn't sure whether they were going to, and if they were, when. Uh, so he said, just go ahead and take, take the, uh, proposals, and then let's hold off on them and don't open and award them until we find out whether we can, we can even use them. So I'll call Ray if I know anything.
Is that something we can split?
Well, I'm hoping, he said that you could deploy between a hundred thousand and an million. It was fifteen and sixteen disasters, and we fell under it.
Well, okay, I see, but that's under the, that's under the flood money, and, and they've already allocated the five top one, Newton County, Orange County, Jefferson County, those got a set amount, and the leftover is gonna be up for the other one hundred and thirty-three counties to, to be competitive.
So it's a long shot, but it's worth the try.
But it's worth, yeah, if we've got the, if we already got the engineer packets in, and all we have to do is submit an application, sure it's worth it.
Please.
So, y'all, I'll let y'all know as soon as I find out, and y'all may have to, again, come up with the numbers of the damage you had in fifteen, sixteen, and we'll, we'll run that up the flagpole. I mean, we get, we get seventy-five thousand dollars for each one, that's seventy-five thousand you don't have.
All right. I'm all about it.
A little over, two little dollars.
Even though I said I never would deal with any of that budget again, but...
The other, the, the last thing I need is, is there the Roden Bridge, y'all happy with your, I know I've gotta get one from precinct four.
You want three hundred fifty thousand.
We gotta find that three hundred fifty thousand somewhere.
Well, get to work, but I gotta have this thing, that's gonna be a part of the budget that has to be by the proposed, proposed budget, so I gotta have that by month.
But I ain't gonna say nothing.
Where you gonna get it from, you know?
That's it. Well, I tell you, the only place we can get it from is we, again, as I have said, every year, I don't mind giving somebody more, I just have to take it somewhere. So either have to take it from one of the other departments, y'all included, I have nobody, I have one person. Not a whole lot I can give up, I, but, you know, hey, I can type kinda, and I don't mind doing it, I do a lot of it now, trust me. But I either have to take it from y'all, from the clerk's office, I gotta take it from one of the thirty other departments to give it to one, or I gotta go, go, go to the public and raise your taxes.
I'll take it from the...
Yeah, I'll raise taxes, how about you, Donna?
Let's let Amy go.
What's the landfill I asked you for?
Let's let that...
What's the landfill?
Oh, that doesn't matter, no, that, the landfill, we can go to the landfill, you can go for whatever, we're just, I mean, this is, I mean, we take, just say, the landfill is just, uh...
Precinct four.
The airport and the landfill.
They're both, they're enterprise funds, so they don't take any general fund tax money.
Right.
Uh, the landfill is...
Very little increase.
Very little, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand total, but two hundred and seventy-five of that's depreciation. Um, so it's, you know, not, they don't even, the capital outlay is, is not, didn't increase.
Basically good.
Take two hundred and fifty, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand, or two hundred.
Well, they're...
They got it.
And then, give me the rest of that tax money.
In order to balance their budget, they're, they're having...
They had to draw here, yeah.
Their fund balance.
So that, they're already deficit in their budget, by two hundred and eight thousand.
Wouldn't have nothing trashed out there.
Well, that's because of the closures and the equipment they've had to buy the last couple of years. And then, maybe next year, they may be, we may be able to take two, three hundred thousand out of there. Uh, but it's just they've had, like I said, we've had the closure and opening the cell this last year, they had to buy, you know, forty, four hundred thousand dollar dump trucks, whatever, now bulldozer, you know, compactor, or packer, or whatever you call it.
There's another factor with the, with the landfill. We use their, or the, actually the county's financial security to, in order to qualify, uh, with TCEQ. If we don't have that, then we have to put up the money for the entire estimated closing cost, which is some eight million dollars. And so, uh, we have to keep not only the county financially strong, but also the landfill.
And that's why we can't wander every year and draw money out of there, right? But again, there is times where we do, for years, for, you know, a couple of years and seven years in a row, they have, they have a profit, that eventually we can draw some out of, but you can't have two-year deficit in a row, because then it...
It triggers a whole lot of problems, it, it really is. And without that, without that mechanism, which I think is the most foolish thing in the world, the way they do it, uh, because it is no financial security, uh, financial assurance, but they allow us to do it. Otherwise, we either have to put up an insurance, buy an insurance policy, put up a bond, or actually have the money set aside. And, and, and all three of those are cost prohibitive, so...
Eight million dollars are sitting there, that's our fund balance.
So our fund balance really is saving us there.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. And, and the fund balance, not only mainly in the general fund, but also in the landfill.
And the airport, same way, we're looking at, uh, uh, hundred thousand dollars in capital outlay, that's for another rent project, some around the tea hangars, maybe. And hopefully, we get the airworthiness through this, this current construction project, and the air, the total airworthiness of the airport will be done, and we'll start looking at, at some of this funding over the next few years to maybe, uh, increase our capacity as far as tea hangars and things go, because we've got a waiting list of people that wanna leave a hangar, and if we can get more home base, I mean, if we can get to that, and I, we, I think everybody's been praying for this for a hundred years, waiting to get to that hundred home base aircraft number, because that puts us, elevates us to a different bracket as far as FAA and tax laws concerned. We give all kinds of additional funding and, and stuff.
How far are we from there?
Seventy-six, seventy-eight.
Thirty to thirty-five more.
The thing is, we got several out there that are, you know, several that are in our hangars that aren't, aren't listed as just being their home base, they're in another state.
Right.
So, you know, if we can encourage them, of course, they're worried about personal property taxes.
Yeah.
And, and when you own a jet, you know, if you can register it, have it registered in a home base in another state, then our freight district can't come around and say, oh, you need to pay personal property taxes on an eight million dollar jet.
Do we tax the airplane?
So...
So, not used in business, only if it's used in business or...
Yeah. And a lot of write that off over there, and of course, they just, they're not using it more for personal, but they're using their business to write it off with. We need to have some workshops with these department heads.
Okay.
So we've got, I mean, especially like election administrator, tax assessor who has asked for increases, the sheriff's office, and let them know. So when do y'all wanna do, when I need to post a notice tomorrow, do y'all wanna do it Tuesday, Monday?
Sooner or later.
Let me know, so we can, I can, probably Tuesday, I can notify them and have them here.
So, we're good then?
We can start at like ten in the morning and bring them in every thirty, forty, thirty minutes if wanted.
Who we gotta meet with, or...
Well, I, I mean, we can, I can, I, I mean, anybody that wants to come can come, but I mean, is Reba gonna come when she didn't even submit a budget and has no increase request?
Well, I'm just saying, once...
I mean, Amy had to be here, but I mean, would you come if you didn't have to be here, because you had no request?
The only ones that we, that's not getting what they're requesting is sheriff, isn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, if y'all wanna talk to the tax assessor about what she's wanting to do in there, and have her justify it, then we'll, I'll invite her to come. If you wanna talk to the election administrator, say, you know, can you not manage it with the three people you have, why do you need another contract person? I mean, it's kinda obvious as to why they need one during election time, but, um, but that's, I mean, that's, that would be, and I, of course, I T, I'm telling you, they're gonna say, well, we can either start replacing a certain number of computers every year and keep our system up, or we let it shut down and have, continue to have more problems. Uh, but that's basically it.
And the airport and those three part-time people, um, on top of that.
Well, that, yeah, and then the airport, of course, they're funding their own. Um, so, I mean, we can bring Gary in, and that might be a good thing for him to come in and experience this, this, you know, uh, of course, they're protecting fuel cells, gonna be, so I think they're already up some over this time last year, so we're, I mean, they're doing, uh, of course, doing pretty good. We just, I'd just like to get to a point where we could really do some work out there, I mean, it needs some tender loving care, I mean, it's, it needs to be fresh washed and painted, yeah, you know.
It is.
I mean, and I've tried for eleven years I've been here to look at a way to, to expand the cafe, but we just haven't, you know, again, it's money, it's all it is.
You, you expand the cafe, you have a power point there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but it's just money, and that's the thing.
Yeah.
And the problem is, we're, we're packed now, we're booked now. If we expand it, it's a demand, is it gonna, is it, is it gonna increase to cover that expansion, I don't know. Uh, but, I mean, it could be, you know, there's, like I said, it...
Monday's scheduled for late, Tuesday about nine, four, minute, one o'clock.
We do it in the morning ten?
Tuesday morning ten, but...
Yes, we do like a ten Tuesday. Yeah, I just figured it would take, we only got two or three departments, and I figured it'd take thirty minutes each. Sheriff's office may take longer, I mean...
Yeah, we said that.
Because I don't know how many people show up with them, and they may have to wind through here, but...
That's okay.
So what do you think of Tuesday, or Monday?
Tuesday at ten.
Tuesday at ten.
Tuesday at ten.
So, we're just, we're just scheduling thirty minutes apart. Uh, if one runs over, the others just have to wait, I, like I said, most of them won't take fifteen minutes, because it's, you know, tax assessor's gonna say, well, you know, the equipment out there is, is getting old awfully, can't ma- maintain it, we need to replace it, we gotta fix the drive-through window, and then secure the front counters, and that's basically it, we can say, yeah, we just, we do whatever we want. And then the, I mean, the election administrator, if you wanna just say, yeah, we'll do it and not bring her in, I mean, a lot of these...
I'm personally fine with, with all of those. I know we'll have to meet with the sheriff.
Well, I mean, you want me to just schedule the sheriff at ten, or what?
I'm just saying, y'all talk Tuesday, because I'm, Monday, I'm gonna leave Monday to get the budget.
Oh, no, we gotta, yeah, we get this, yeah, because we, Monday, I gotta get this filed by five o'clock, four thirty or something.
Yeah.
So, if you wanna do it Tuesday morning ten, we'll just schedule the sheriff's office for ten o'clock Tuesday morning? Anybody else?
I'm fine with meeting the airport.
You wanna do the airport, sheriff's office?
Uh, I'll be at the airport.
You're not gonna give him, you're not gonna request additional personnel, that's what he's asking.
What does he have in his budget?
He put it as a, parenthetically, he didn't have an amount, you know, he just said, three additional, three part-time employees. I don't have it, I don't have it in this numbers, no sir.
But I mean, does he have the money in, is it in the airport, does the airport have the funds to cover three part-time people?
I'll have to see.
Okay, well, let's look at that, if they can only cover one, we'll do, I mean, if he's got funds in there to pay for one part-time, we'll do one.
I got an idea of what he wants to do, is consider what I'm, uh, is using part-timers over full timers.
Well, that's what Randy did several years ago.
You asked for three additional positions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not take...
Not take full timers and make part timers, he's wanting three additional part-time. And I think that's to keep some of the overtime down from the full timer, you know, brings them in a few hours, because some have to come in, I think maybe for prepping and stuff, getting them ready, and then the full timers.
Who is that over there?
Is Gary now, I mean, is he the man?
Or he's still in...
He's still in there.
Yeah, I just kinda, I mean, he's still pretty new, I've been here several years, but I just wanna see how he handles this construction project and gets that final finished up, and then we...
With brass?
Yeah, me too, yeah.
He works with us now.
But I, I just wanna, yeah, oh, yeah, he's been family, but he's a, he's done, he's, I mean, he...
Well, a lot of people don't really understand about that job, and I know you didn't, some of the others not out there as much as I am, that job is a sixty and seventy-hour week.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, except, you know, he's got Don right here, man, out there.
Is it not, is it not a sixty-hour job, sixty-hour?
Well, it is, when there's a project going on out there.
When there's a project going on, you gotta, I thought, watch what's going on, because you got a lot of questions.
What's the consensus out there from the people who visit? I don't know if we're supposed to discuss it, but with, with him running things?
Uh, good, good.
Yeah, yeah, I think people like it.
There hasn't been a lot of, there hasn't been any flack.
No.
He was, he was prepared for it.
Yeah, I hear a good thing from, from the people out there that have planes.
That's all I heard, yeah.
Yeah, so...
We're gonna adjourn or recess.
Now, we're, we, we can't recess from now till Tuesday, we're, we're gonna adjourn.
Well, we can.
And then, I will post an agenda tomorrow for Tuesday at ten o'clock, and I will notify the sheriff's office. And, did y'all want the airport here or no? Or you wanted us to look and see if you've got the funds for the part-time?
As if he got funds.
If it doesn't come from general fund.
I know he had had questions about his fuel, uh, from last year's, but I'd let him come in and just visit him, man.
Yeah, it might be good for him, like you say.
We'll put him first.
Put him first. No, no, let's put him second, that way we have reason to get the sheriff and them out of here. If we put the sheriff safe, we may be here for three, four hours.
Sorry, time's up.
Yeah, you got, you know, you got so much time, and we gotta get on to the next department. I mean, it is what it is, so...